All right, we ready? The council will come to order. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into the and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, service members, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Let me turn Counselor Condon's mic on for an additional moment of silence.
Thank you, Amanda. I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the unfortunate death of one of our great Ward II people, Billy Satimio, who passed away last week. And he had a tremendous salute to him and a number of people that showed up to his funeral, along with his wife, three children, one had passed, Michael. But if you needed a furnace fixed, it was Billy. I think he fixed half the furnaces in Ward II. But he was a guy that just didn't know how to say no. And he's going to be missed in our community. So please give him a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. The clerk will now call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Here.
Counselor Condon? Counselor Crowe?
Here.
Counselor McDonald?
Here.
Counselor O'Malley? Counselor Sika?
Yeah.
Counselor Simonelli? Is with us remotely. Counselor Spatafora? Is with us remotely. Our Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Winslow?
Here.
Counselor President? No, we can't hear you. We can't hear you, Spatafora. We can't hear you, Simonelli. Counselor, Council President Lanning?
Here. And just for the public's awareness, we are still working out some of our teams' tech issues behind the scenes, but given the hour, we are choosing to proceed with the agenda. We do have quite a few members of the public in attendance, so we don't want to keep folks waiting. Our IT director is working behind the scenes to try to get our remote participants onboard with us. So the next order of business, or our first order of business, is guest citizens' achievement and announcements. Clerk, will you please read the first order of business?
Joe LeBlanc, founder of the Run Club of Malden, will appear before the city council to present the city with the plaque from the Road Runners Club of America, hereby naming Malden an official runner-friendly community.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, so I have a plaque here. It's from Road Runner Clubs of America. Several of you counselors assisted the club in getting this achievement. It has to do with, you know, Malden being considered a safe and welcoming place for runners. A lot of it has to do with the infrastructure we have, be it the Northern Strayan Community Trail and just things that they look for, crosswalks, and just to make it a safe and welcoming place. And so we were really proud to get this achievement, and Malden is really there. It's a great spot for our club and for our runners, so we thank you for that. So I have this plaque. I'd love to give it to you guys, however you want to have it.
Do we want to do a photo? Okay. Yeah, let me put Counselor Taylor's light on as the sponsor of our guest tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming and for all the work that you have done. We also have a citation from the city for you for just your amazing contributions to the community and for keeping, for building the community and keeping it going. We really just appreciate that, so I guess we'll also be presenting you with that.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, maybe before we do that, I have one light. Counselor Cologne Hayes, did you want to speak?
I did. Thank you. Hi, Joe. Thank you so much again for all you do here. I remember years ago when I was with, actually, a few of you when you first started this, and I can't believe how you all grew this. And it is just such a great thing to see, you know, people getting healthy and running. And I know I haven't been there in quite some time. I'd like to get back. But it is really exciting to see what you all have done and to give just another activity for folks in Malden. So thank you so much for continuing all the work that you do.
You're welcome. Yeah. You're all are welcome too. Sunday, we have our road race. Again, many of you guys have helped us with this, and we're so appreciative of all the work that the city does, the police and you guys. It's Sunday morning, 10:00 AM. It's called the Wobble Before You Gobble. It's a Thanksgiving-themed race. It's a really great race. It's grown. I think Counselor Hayes was there when it was eight people. And now we're going to have over 400 people. And if you're 400 of the participants, we have a kids' dash that's free and open to all, ages like zero up to about 10 years old, do a short little run. And then there's a 5K afterwards. And our beneficiaries are Bread of Life Malden and Mystic Valley YMCA. We've raised over $10,000 for that, for those two organizations in the last couple of years. So we'd love to see some more people there. It's going to be a great day. So thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, all again. I appreciate all you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, let's go. I want to come out in front, and we'll take a quick photo.
Looking good. I don't know if there's an official photographer. Thank you.
Okay, our next order of business is public comment. Public comment's allowed under our council rules. Each speaker is limited to subject matter relevant to the evening's agenda and must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes, we have 11 people signed up for public comment.
Okay, so let's take our first in-person public comment.
William Spatafora, 37 Prospect Street.
Good evening. William Spatafora, 37 Prospect Street, Malden. I'm here tonight because it has become painfully clear that there is a lack of consideration for the residents of Malden who are expected to pay for every single wish list item that comes across the table. Before you ask us to reach deeper into our pockets, I'd like to know how many meetings have actually been held to review potential budget cuts? Where is the evidence that the cost-saving measures have been discussed? The reeds on lampposts look great. What did those cost? The mums planted across the city are nice. Were they necessary? These are small examples, but they point to a larger question. Does anyone analyze departmental spending and say, "We can save money here if we cut there"? Or does it simply not matter because the default solution is always to have the taxpayers foot the bill? This mindset will continue until the residents feel they have no option left but to sell their homes and leave. And that is not what we want. We love the city. We want to stay in Malden. But we cannot and will not continue to pay for the inability to make hard decisions. That's exactly what we elected you to do, so do it. Residents deserve real leadership. Vote these debt exclusions down and prove to residents you actually care about us. Thank you.
Next, we have Neil Kennan at 11 Spruce Street.
Neil Kennan, 11 Spruce Street. I just want to quickly cite the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report done by Chuck Rannigan. The '25 is not done yet. What we have here is a spending problem. Not a revenue problem, more than enough revenue, more than you're going to get in the next five years has come in over the last five years. But what's happened in the last 10 years is the following. In 2015, the city had 1,290 employees. Five years later, it had 1,361. And five, and four years later, it had 1,552. That's 262 more employees. It's not just the schools. The school depart, this is full-time employees. The schools went up 210. You may say you can't control them. I'll give you that in the short term. In the long term, though, you went up 52 employees outside of the school department. Where are they? Who's talking about it? The population hasn't grown here? So that needs to be addressed. What also needs to be addressed is even if you get, and I think the movement is to do these overrides, even if you get them done, you haven't done what Mr. Spatafora said and gotten at the structural problem. Here's the structural problem. Inflation, 4.5%. City council over the last five years, 4.8% on average. Legal department, 18.1%. City clerk's office, 9.5%. Inspection service, 13.1% up. Police department, 11.4. Fire department, uh, yeah, uh, fire, uh, police department, 5.1. Inspection service, 11.4. Education, and this is the big one, and you can't do anything about it, but you should refuse to do net school spending, 6.2. That's why you cannot keep going. Because that 6.2, you pass the 5.4 tomorrow, five years from now, we'll be right back here if education spending keeps going up because your revenue over here in the city, even if it goes up 4.5%,
Mr. Kennan, you're at time.
is not
Thank you.
Next, we have Denise Cowie at 81 Newland Street.
Hi, Denise Cowie, 81 Newland Street. Tonight, I'm speaking in opposition to the five proposed debt exclusion overrides. Collectively, these measures would authorize the city of Malden to take on an additional $91 million in temporary tax increases, some lasting more than 25 years. While each project has its own, the core issue is affordability and responsibility. And we have to ask, can Malden taxpayers sustain this level of added burden on top of already rising costs for housing, utilities, and everyday living? The lodges of these overrides, $36 million for the Northeast Volk, will raise taxes until 2052, a 26-year commitment. Many of us today will be paying for this long into retirement. And at the same time, we're being asked for $10 million for lead pipes, $10 million for an art center, $10 million for Roosevelt Park remediation, and $25 million for a new fire station. We all care about safe water quality schools, public safety, recreation, and the arts. But caring about these goals is not the same as agreeing to fund them through long-term tax heists without a clear, comprehensive financial plan. Before taxpayers are asked to shoulder nearly $100 million in added assessments, we should see alternative funding strategies, grants, phased approaches, a prioritization of existing capital funds. A debt exclusion should be a last resort, not the first answer to every capital project the city faces. We expect reasonable budgeting, long-term planning, and solutions that do not place additional financial strain on residents who are already stretched thin. And to the councils who signed on to this, how dare you wait until after the election to come after us with your own personal agenda? We should have been known of this before we went to the polls. That's it.
Maria Despido, 81 Floraleve.
Hi. Hello. I'm just here to talk, speak in favor of Jeff Donahue to represent Malden for the Northeast Vocational School Board seat. He's a former Ward IV counselor that worked hard for the city. I believe that with his background as a lifelong union tradesman, he would be a great addition to the board, so that's all I have.
Bryn Garrity, 47 Perkins Ave.
Hi. Lot of familiar faces. I'm going to kick us off by thanking all of the people who just talked about the budgetary issues because Jeff Donahue is going to add to our budgetary issues after we all have to pay his pension. He lost his city council race in 2021, recently lost the preliminary school committee race, and his ward has resoundingly rejected him multiple times recently. He is now using his friends on the council and in the local government to secure his pension without winning an election. That means that we, the taxpayers, will be paying his pension if they waive the next election. So I think if we're paying pensions with our budget issues, we should be paying pensions to government employees that actually earn it. This vote to appoint him is rushed due to upcoming shift in council members, we know. And this corrupt behavior that's happening is exactly what Maldonians voted against in the recent elections. Not only Malden, multiple towns surrounding us voted against corrupt local politicians for this reason and this behavior. Jeff Donahue does not deserve to be appointed to the Northeast School Committee, certainly doesn't deserve to have the next election waived so he can float into retirement on our tax-paying dime. He needs to earn it.
Scott Fitzpatrick, 68 Olive Ave.
Good evening. Scott Fitzpatrick, 68 Olive Ave. Just want to voice my support for Jeff Donahue to be appointed to a vacant seat at Northeast Metro Tech. I'm speaking as a resident and a proud graduate. The school really needs its leadership from Malden, and I can't think of a better person than Jeff Donahue. Jeff has a long history of public service. He served on the council here. And he wasn't afraid to ask the tough questions when he was on the council here of departments and agencies with their spending. He's a well-respected member of the Coppers' Local Union 218 of their executive board. And I can't think of any better person than Jeff Donahue to represent Malden on the Northeast Metro Tech School Committee during the transition from the old school into the new school. Thank you.
Got Siobhan Callahan, 68 Olive Ave.
Hi, Siobhan Callahan, 68 Olive Ave. I'm here to express my support for Jeff Donahue to fill the vacant seat at the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School Committee. It's important that Malden is represented by an individual with appropriate background and experience who understands the issues associated with vocational education. Mr. Donahue is a lifelong Malden resident and a former Ward IV city counselor. His professional career in the trades, combined with his leadership in the union, provides him with knowledge of the essential roles a vocational education plays in preparing students for blue-collar careers. His extensive experience offers a practical perspective that directly aligns with the missions of the vocational school. His background in public service and his job in the union and his leadership experience will make him a great appointment for this role.
Jennifer Spatafora, 37 Prospect Street.
Good evening. I usually do not dress the council because I have my own platform being on the school committee, but I thought it was really important that I speak to the debt exclusion topic tonight. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned that we're discussing debt exclusions before we have any clarity on what will happen with Proposition 2.5. It's putting the cart before the horse, and frankly, it feels like we're throwing spaghetti at a wall to see what sticks. The last time I came before this council was to advocate for the demolition of 15 Ferry Street because on the school side, we recognize the potential tax revenue new development could bring. I stood here then in support of decisions that strengthen our long-term financial outlook. So yes, it's frustrating to now see us rushing ahead on debt exclusions without fully understanding our broader financial situation. The energy going into stirring up the community around these debt exclusions could have been far better spent standing with your fellow committee members and council members at the recent Chapter 70 study forums or at the State House pushing for legislature to move quickly and fix the funding issues at the root of this problem. That advocacy is where our focus should have been and still needs to be. So tonight, I'm asking this council to pause, refocus, prioritize one major issue at a time, stand with the school committee, with our educators, and with our families as we push for real structural change, hold off on the debt exclusions until we have a better look at how everything's going to land. It's logical. Thank you.
Kimberly Gillette, 7th Tuff Street.
Hello, Malden City Council. I came all the way in person to say that I look forward to applying to the position of the school committee representative for the vacant Malden position of the Northeast School Committee that needs to be filled ASAP. I have faith that you all will agree that transparency and procedure are paramount in positions such as school committee representatives. This position should cover the interim only, and a valid and fair election be held for the seat that will represent so many Malden families. Vocational schools are worthy of proper representation as public schools. As a recent candidate for Malden School Committee in Ward I, I received over 260 votes on my first time out as a one-woman campaign against a longtime incumbent. I have, I was 13 votes shy of the seat, and I have knocked on the doors of almost every ward over the last decade and can say with my whole chest that I am someone that people would vote for. The mayor's suggestion, we'll have trouble saying the same. I'm an active participant in public school communities and events. I volunteer my time in schools and with grassroots organizations throughout our beautiful city. I am a tradeswoman that is also represented at the vocational school. I'm a Level One stylist, master of my craft, and small business owner here in Malden. I'm also back in school at our local community college to transition careers because I can. I am aware, up to date, and involved in discussions around learning, not just for me, but because my own children attend high school and preschool. I am outspoken, and I am not new around here. If the mayor missed such an obvious opportunity like me and asking me to step up for the interim, imagine how many excited and really, really qualified candidates that we're missing out on in a democratic process. I look forward to putting my resume up against the suggested candidate and so many others that will likely apply. And if I lose, at least it will be to someone in the community wants representing them.
Sean Salazar, 59 Bainbridge Street.
Good evening, Sean Salazar. I live at 59 Bainbridge Street. I came tonight planning to speak in support of the agenda items from Counselor O'Malley, Cologne Hayes, and Winslow that would earmark revenue for the imposed override for specific projects. As Malden considers the path forward on an override, it's important that all options be discussed so we can fund both essential services and long-neglected projects, including a revitalized Roosevelt Park without turf. But while reviewing the agenda, I was struck by Item 432-25, the appointment of Jeffrey Donahue to complete the Malden representative's term on the Northeast Metro Tech School Committee after the passing of James Holland. In his letter, Mayor Christensen acknowledged that the city council and the Malden School Committee are meant to jointly select the replacement and that typically this would involve community outreach to identify interested, qualified candidates. Instead, the mayor chose to bypass that process to, quote-unquote, "move expeditiously", putting forward his own candidate without allowing an open and transparent search. This raises real concerns about political patronage, especially when one of the justifications offered is that the nominee, quote-unquote, "recently ran for school committee" despite losing in a preliminary election. The mayor also cited the nominee's background as a tradesman and advocate for vocational education. Those are important qualities, but they are not exclusive to one person. Many Malden residents, including people working directly in vocational education and active in the community, are equally qualified and would welcome the opportunity to apply by pre-selecting a candidate that the mayor overlooked the possibility of other capable applicants and sidestep the joint responsibility of the council and the school committee. This is political favoritism, and it undermines the transparent process our community expects. I urge this council to reject this overreach and begin an open application process so all qualified Malden residents have a fair chance to be considered for this important educational role. Thank you.
Does that conclude our in-person public comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, clerk. Did we receive any additional comments via email?
Yes.
Can you summarize the content or the topics that we received emails regarding?
We received nine emails that support the appointment of Jeff Donahue. We received 11 emails opposing the appointment of Jeff Donahue. And we received two emails opposing the debt exclusion ballot questions.
Okay, do counselors want to hear the debt exclusion emails? We probably have time for just one or two emails. I think we can... Okay, let's hear the two debt exclusion, and then I think we're good with the summary of the for and against for the appointment.
Dear Clerk and City Council, I'm writing to voice my strong opposition to 434-25, 435-25, 436-25, 437-25, and 438-25. The mayor's office, finance committee, and council as a whole has done nothing to cut back on expenses nor shown any good-faith attempt to do so. However, they expect property owners to assume a tax increase to supplement their shortcomings and reasonable, unreasonable wish list. Additionally, trying to push these items through last minute and holding a special election in February is irresponsible and reckless with no regard for the constituents of Malden, especially for those who will have to assume the burden. Therefore, I urge the council to strongly vote no for a special election for an override and all other items attached to it until other alternatives and solutions are explored. Many of us have had to make our own personal cutbacks to make ends meet. The city has an obligation to do the same. I would also like to know what the cost would be to hold a special election in February. Thank you. Sincerely, Janice Rice, 103 Henry Street. And sorry I couldn't be here tonight to talk to you all in person, work issues. I think of all of you in the highest regard. I feel that I am in a unique situation. My hubby works for a town that is also going through an override vote as well. My hubby works for a town that is also going through an override vote as well. We are in override fatigue over here, lol. Joking aside, it's been the topic of dinner conversations at my house for months. I am seeing both sides of this. I am still a hard no on this. I don't think asking for money for a firehouse or an art center is the right thing right now. Where would the firehouse go? That would be engine too, by the way. I also think a hiring freeze and cuts are in order. We have to do, we have to do it in our own households, correct? I feel, in my humble opinion, those that own houses are going to get screwed, especially if there are going to be multiple overrides in the coming years. If the city offered one big financial number with no additional overrides in the future, it may be easier to swallow. Again, my opinion here. Not sure if that is something you can do. Thank you for listening, Marlene Gala, Forty Webster Street.
Thank you to our clerk. There's even more colorful language to be viewed on the agenda. If you want to see the rest of the letters, we'll be attaching those.
They will be attached.
They will be attached tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Our next order of business is public, is the consent agenda. I apologize. This evening's consent agenda consists of one appointment to be referred to Personnel and Appointments Committee and twenty-three petitions to be referred to the License Committee. Does any councillor have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for the purposes of further discussion? Okay, seeing, seeing no lights on a motion by councillor Sika, seconded by councillor Taylor. We have to do a roll call vote because we have two councillors remote. Whenever the clerk is ready. And I don't actually know if we can, if we've had any success getting our remote councillors to be able to vote.
We'll go by a thumbs up, thumbs down situation.
Councillor Simonelli, if you're able to put your video back on. Oh, I see you. Okay, great, thank you. So we can do the thumbs up. Okay, perfect. Okay, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councillor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councillor Condon? Councillor Crowe?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley?
Yes.
Councillor Sika?
Yes.
Councillor Simonelli? Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Councillor Spatafora? Thumbs up. Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President Linehan?
Yes. Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Next order of business.
Appointments and elections, Paper 432-25. Joint appointment of the City Council and School Committee, Jeffrey Allen Donahue, Fifty-Six Tremont Street, Malden, as the Malden representative of the Northeast Metro Tech School Committee to fulfill the term left vacant by the passing of James Holland per the Regional School District's Community Agreement. Said term to commence upon confirmation by both bodies of the Malden City Council and School Committee.
Okay, do we have a communication to read?
We do.
Thank you.
It's a letter of appointment by the mayor. Dear Members of the Council, I am writing to you regarding the, regarding filling the open position on the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School Committee with the passing of James Holland. As City Clerk Carol Ann De Zidario indicated, the Regional Community Agreement under which the school committee operates calls for any vacancy to be filled by the local school committee and the city council acting jointly. The appointment is temporary in that they shall serve until the next regular biennial election. I considered gouging interest from members of our community, but after giving this additional thought, I believe it was, it would result in a lengthy, unwieldy, and undefined process. This is a unique situation and there is simply no criteria that would guide the type of process that we may conduct for an open position on a board or commission. When combined with the temporary nature of the appointment and the importance of having Malden represented as represented as soon as possible, Malden is better served with a more immediate appointment. Therefore, I am recommending to the City Council and the School Committee the appointment of Jeffrey Donahue to fill the open position until the next election. He is a lifelong Malden resident and former Ward Four City Councilor, but more importantly, Jeff has spent his career in the trades as a carpenter and union leader where he has been passionate about the role vocational education should play in our education system. He recently ran for the Malden School Committee where he also spoke about the importance of vocational education. Malden would be uniquely situated by having a representative who has hands-on experience in, in the trades, a true passion for vocational education, and local political experience. I think his back, I think this background will serve us well as the voc opens a new facility and expands enrollment. I would recommend that we follow the same process that Chelsea recently did in having the City Council first vote on the appointment and subsequently the School Committee. I would also ask that we move expeditiously with filling this vacancy. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Gary Christensen, Mayor, City of Malden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so we are having a variety of technical issues, both in the room and on teams. Councillor Sika's microphone is not working and we have councillor Simonelli, whose virtual microphone is not working. So what I am gonna do is I'm gonna take councillor Sika first. I just, I'm just stating that because I need to put her light on and you're gonna see that she's not blinking, but she's letting me know that she's waiting in the queue via her hand being raised. I'm then gonna take folks who are lit up on my screen here and then I'm going to take councillor Simonelli via cellphone through my microphone. So please bear with me while I address these issues as quickly as I can. Councillor Sika, you have the floor.
Ooh, it, my, my light is working.
I'm glad to hear it.
The button is just not working. Thank you, Council President. I appreciate you allowing me to go first because I think what I have to say might stifle some debate up on this, on the council floor. So I have prepared something that I was going to read, but as I was listening to several members of the public discuss in public comment...
Oops, sorry. We, oh, I'm so sorry. You're, you're live again.
Thank you, sorry.
Nope, that's our fault.
I heard the word transparency over and over and over again. And I also heard a resident say that we did not vote for corrupt behavior, but that is exactly what the residents of the City of Malden voted for a few Tuesdays ago, was corrupt behavior. And I'm gonna explain why I believe that, okay? Because I would like to request that councillor Cologne Hayes, along with councillor O'Malley, recuse themselves from deliberating on this specific topic and voting on this matter because there's two serious violations of state laws. Mass General Law, Chapter Two-Sixty-Eight A, Section Twenty-Three B Three requires that a public employee to consider whether his or her relationships and affiliations could prevent him or her from acting fairly and objectively when he or she performs her duties for a city or a town. If he or she cannot be fair and objective because of a relationship or an affiliation, he or she should not perform their duties. Councillor Cologne Hayes and councillor O'Malley have well-known personal relationships with Mr. Donahue that prevents them from being objective on this particular vote. Over the last thirty-six hours, my head has been spinning. I've had a migraine for the past two days over what I've heard is happening in this city. I've spoken to people last night, today, and there is little gray area on this topic. I would also like to let everybody know that, and to this body's attention, that there is a violation of open meeting law by councillor Cologne Hayes. Serial deliberation is prohibited by open meeting law. Councillor Cologne Hayes has communicated privately with at least five other members of this body representing a quorum of this exact topic we are deliberating in front of the council this evening for the purpose of impacting the deliberations on this matter.
I'm, I'm sorry. What's your point of order? I'm trying to get to your microphone. Councillor O'Malley.
Point of order to the president. You have made it a point to talk about decorum and I would like for you to actually enforce what you state.
I, I am not being...
Let me finish my point of order. The, the decorum of this body, councillor Linehan, you have said that you care about decorum, but you only seem to care about decorum when it has to do with certain people.
It's funny. You, you...
Enforce the rules of decorum.
Please don't talk over each other. Let councillor O'Malley finish his point.
Please.
Councillor O'Malley, I'm gonna let councillor Sika finish her point and I'm gonna let councillor Cologne Hayes respond. She's next in turn and she has the right to respond. Thank you.
Thank you. Serial private discussions via emails, text messages, or phone calls violate the law's requirement that deliberations must happen in a duly noticed public meeting. That is not what has taken place over the last thirty-six hours, okay? You should not be calling and giving your opinion of a topic that is in front of us for deliberation. While preaching transparency, councillor Cologne Hayes has violated the public trust with her private deliberations. I have heard from several city councillors up here. I was not blessed to have received a phone call or a text. Thank you, Jesus. But there are others that have and, and therefore, I believe that because of councillor O'Malley's relationship, previous relationship he's had with Jeff Donahue and councillor Cologne Hayes, I think they need to, they should be recusing themselves from all discussions tonight on this matter to maintain what we have left to salvage the integrity of this discussion. Because there, there's some serious problems here if we continue to move forward with this. And, and it has nothing to do with Jeff. This is any business that is before us as a city council. We should not be having deliberation. We should... I got in trouble years ago for an open meeting law violation for sending an email and putting my, saying how I was voting on it. I didn't try to sway anyone's vote. I didn't try to change anyone's mind. That councillor Cologne Hayes has tried to do that over the last thirty-six hours and it's unacceptable. That's corrupt behavior. That's what the people of Malden voted for.
Thank you, councillor Sika. Councillor Cologne Hayes, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. So what I was going to address is, now I'll have to do two things. So I first would like to read what I was going to say about this appointment and what we're talking about. So what I'm gonna do now is read what we received from our city clerk. And this was back in September. And it says, "All, with the passing of James Holland, Malden now has a vacant seat on the Metro, Northeast Metro Tech School Committee. The school's Regional Community Agreement states that a vacancy must be filled by the local school committee and the city council acting jointly to appoint a member to serve the remainder of said term. I spoke with the mayor's office yesterday and it was suggested that a posting could go out to gauge interest in the Malden resident who may wish to fill this position. After identifying a short list of potential candidates, I would recommend that the personnel committees of both bodies meet to review the candidates. This may be done separately or together. The most recent city who had to appoint a member to a vacant seat was Chelsea about six months ago. In Chelsea's case, their council voted first on an appointment, then sent their name to the local school committee for their vote of, of approval. How you choose to put forth a candidate is a decision I will leave up to you. In the attached document, you will see the appointment is meant to fill a vacant seat until the next biannual state election. However, after speaking yesterday to Superintendent De Berry, I learned he is utilizing his authority to waive the next state election until 2026. The appointed successor will serve until the next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, Nemet, the Northeast Metro Tech, I guess it is, school committee election in March of 2028. So with that being said, this is not a personal thing, although I might have some personal feelings, which we all do about certain people and I'll, I'll suggest that, I mean, I'll talk about that later. Right now, this is to do with a process, the democratic process. And what we need to do is exactly what our clerk has suggested and that would be to put this out publicly so that we can hear from, like, the folks who got up and spoke today. Not saying that councillor Donahue may have what it needs to fill this position. I mean, Jeff Donahue, but so do many and many of them are actually in this room today. So in order to have a clear election, we need to just do exactly what this says. It's very clear from Carol Ann, you know, our clerk, what it is that we have to do. It's not hard. I think that he could apply with everyone else that has applied, that could apply to this, and then we meet and we discuss it because that's how a democracy works and that's what we should do. So to me, it's pretty clear. We have to follow this along with our school committee members. Now, second part, too, to address, I'd like to, we could address this by speaking to a city solicitor. I'd like to see notes on who you think I spoke to about this. And also bring up something that happened a few months ago and that was when Lisette Alvarado, we had met and we approved a meeting in, in one of the, I think it was a personnel meeting, sorry. We unanimously put her forth here, you know, as a candidate for the CPC. And then a lot of public and personal things came up here. And so we can be able to have personal feelings and personal disagreements. They were stated by a lot of people on this council and you were one of them. And you didn't like what Lisette had to say on social media and therefore, and how she might have treated some people on here and therefore, you didn't, you, you wanted people here to not vote, vote her out, basically, even though she was voted out through, you know, the personnel committee. So basically, yes, I can have very strong opinions about people and still make a professional choice on what goes on in our city. Funny thing is, is that a few, like, just maybe ten minutes ago, back in the, in the back room, we were talking about jury selection and we, I was chosen for a jury and we were talking about what it was. Could I make a, a decision on a murder, murder suspect even though I work with youth? It had a long session. My father worked in the criminal justice system. I had a lot of personal opinions about this, but could I make a valid decision not on personal opinions? A hundred percent. So that is the same thing here. And I am suggesting that we put this out for a vote because as I just read here, this would not just be filling a short term, like, just putting someone's name down to fill it without any public vote. This would be like a two-year appointment. So I'm asking that we put a hold on this, whether we table it and we put this out so that everyone in our community has an opportunity to apply for this as, we all should have an opportunity to apply for this. It's just fair. And so that's what I'm asking folks to do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cologne Hayes. Councillor O'Malley, would you like an opportunity to speak next? Okay, you have the floor.
You know, I, I will say that the councillor from Ward Eight fundamentally misunderstands the law. And, you know, as someone who has strived to be as transparent and accountable as I can, I'm not perfect. None of us are perfect. You know, when it comes to the open meeting law, when it comes to the public records laws... when it comes to the public records laws, you know, I have tried my best, and I did not violate any open meeting laws.
You did not do that, no.
I, all I will say is, when we talk about how we treat each other, you know, if you expect me to treat you with respect, I would just ask that you treat me with respect. The conversation that you just had could have happened with me outside of this context. It could have happened with legal. There are so many different ways that we could have handled it, and I hope that we can take a step forward to not treat each other the way you treat me. On the process, I really don't want to talk about the person who's been put forward here. I want to talk about process. I think that, you know, respect starts with all of us. I have never been, I'm not a perfect person, but I think we can move forward. There is a defined process for the vacancy. I'm going to read what it is. According to the agreement that we have, "If a vacancy occurs among the members elected by a city under subsection IC, the local school committee members and the members of the city council from a city involved acting jointly shall appoint a member to serve until the regular, next regular biannual city election, at which election of a successor to be elected to serve the balance of the unexpired term, if any." That election could have happened a couple weeks ago, but that was not put forward. This process was, I don't know if it was sped up or slowed down, but we have a chance to do this the right way, where there will be public confidence. And we have so many quality tradespeople in our community. They have, they deserve a chance to represent our community. So I'm focused on the process. I am very prepared to talk about the candidate's qualifications. I'd prefer not to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Councilor Taylor.
Thank you. So I would just like to add that I think the process is extremely important, and I think that the school committee has been somewhat left out of this, and we should be including them more because this is more their wheelhouse than it is ours. But I'd also like to address that when we hold our citizens accountable, we hold each other accountable, we have to hold ourselves accountable. And one thing that I think that we're lacking is some sort of expectations for ourselves that can be put across fairly and evenly for what's expected. As the council that just came on and at the end of my first term, not knowing, you know, and constantly arguing about what is an open meeting law and what isn't, I mean, serial deliberation was actually brought up just two years ago when I started. It was the first open meeting law violation that I was part of. I think we all know that it is not okay. And we have to be okay, regardless how we feel about somebody, holding them to the same standards as everybody else. I'd like to see us do that going forward. I'd like to see us have some expectations. We've talked a lot about having norms and how we're going to hold ourselves accountable so that our community can hold us accountable and know, be able to trust us. I'd like to see that happen going forward. And I would like to put this to the Personnel Committee and make that motion to send this to Personnel so that we can start having, create a process that'll be more transparent in the future.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second on the floor. I am going to try to take Counselor Seminelli on this phone here. So bear with me while I... Lisa's coming back. So, did he?
I'm here.
Okay, Counselor Seminelli, let's give this a shot.
Okay, Madam President. I'm glad to see that you're doing well and that you're in attendance tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's why we've got the sexy mood lighting tonight is for, is for my head.
I appreciate that. That works for me, works for me as well. So I wanted to try and be quick because I don't want you holding the phone up there. I know you're having technical difficulties. Is everybody all right? Can you hear me all right?
It sounds great, actually.
Okay. All right, so I'm just going to give a quick history lesson here. Some years ago, when Richard Howard was a mayor, he actually appointed, in the same process, our current mayor to the school committee, and along with Francis Baker from my neighborhood to the school committee as well. So I'm not saying that the process is not flawed, but I think that if you want to change the process, then what the counselors need to do, or the counselors that are representing this agenda tonight here, should put in a paper to the ordinance committee to do such to that. Do that thing. Other than that, then, you know, we got to go by precedent, and that has been the precedent, whether you like it or you don't like it. That's, that's what we go by. So, I mean, I'm looking at some members here, and this year alone, we're spending $900,000 a year for the vocational schools. Then moving forward, we're going to be spending $1.4 million. Then $2.3 million is what we're paying for right now for our kids to go to the vocational school. So do we really want to keep this seat vacant and not have it seated at the table during this process? I would say no. And as far as the character of former counselor Jeff Donahue, I grew up with Jeff Donahue, and we both grew up pretty hard. And Jeff is a, is in the trades union, I believe, the carpenters' union, and has gotten a lot of people jobs in the city of Malden, including a lot of people from my neighborhood that wouldn't have got these type of jobs if it wasn't for Jeff Donahue. So I think he'd fill that position very well because he has a political background already. And he's a lifelong resident of the city of Malden. That kind of works for me. Even though Joe, Jeff and I haven't always agreed on everything, even as kids, but personalities aside, I think he would do a fantastic job. He's a wonderful father. I know his kids very well. He's brought them up very, very well. And, and I support this appointment. And I think that we need to start moving forward instead of backwards. And, you know, I'm not going to mention, I'm not going to talk about right now about the firehouse, the art center at Roosevelt Park. I will say this, I do not support a two-and-a-half-old ride. I never did. I don't think we should...
We're not talking about that agenda item, so you really shouldn't talk about those, Chris.
Thank you for the correction. But as far as the, you're right. But as far as the appointment goes, you know, I, I think Jeff will do a fantastic job there. Now, I'm just going to keep personalities out of it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Seminelli. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second on the floor, but I do have a couple other lights. I'm going to go to Counselor Winslow and then Counselor Crowe. Counselor Seika, you want to speak in another time?
Just really quickly.
Okay, all right. Counselor Winslow, I'll take you next.
Yeah, I mean, since I was elected in 2017 to the council, started serving in 2018, there's been a commitment from the council to try to open up opportunities for people to serve on board commissions, to advertise things more broadly, even for elected, you know, for, for city positions to be out there. So that's been a commitment I've seen since 2018. So I don't know about these precedents under Mayor Howard. That's quite a while ago. And I don't see anything in that legislation that prevents us from having a process as a council. And I know, having served on the Personnel Committee and knowing Counselor Linehan and Counselor Crowe have been very serious about those commitments. We've actually tried to work with the mayor's office to sort of reduce some of that burden to, you know, when there's certain positions that we think that really should be go quickly, we do. But, you know, an elected position that's, you know, going to be filled for a couple years at least and may, you know, make someone incumbent, that's a pretty serious responsibility that's put on us under the law. And I think it's perfectly legitimate to say we need to have a transparent process. We've already heard some people beyond, I appreciate Mr. Donahue putting his, you know, his, his interests forward, but there's other people. We should consider this as serious business. And to make this about personalities, I just think is, is wrong. I think we have a serious role that's been called on us by the legislature. We should undertake it that. Put personalities aside and figure out what, who can best serve from Malden, and just having one person to consider is, I don't think is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. And actually, it is really a unique situation as Counselor O'Malley had outlined sort of the vacancies. It's about four lines, really, that really doesn't set us a clear process of how or who puts the names forward. And, you know, as Counselor Winslow has said, you know, we, as the body, have been trying to be, get out there and get a broad perspective of people that would be interested in things. But we cannot set the mayor's process. We have no authority to tell him how he has to go forward with his process, and we have no authority to tell the school committee how they go about their process. We do have precedent as we look into that. The mayor has been the one that puts the name forward. So he did do that. We've had other things. Again, if he, the mayor decides to put it out, he can put it out. But if he doesn't want to, he's, he's a body of one. Us, we have to put things out like that, really, because we have a body of eleven. So, you know, we can't have all different processes. But, so we do have a name before us. And although I think if we're going to be sending this to committee, is that to interview Mr. Donahue? I think just take an up or down vote now? And if it's about the process, it is a little more, sort of cumbersome because there's not really a clear one. And I know that Counselor Cologne Hayes had mentioned about the superintendent, but he is now speaking to his attorney before confirming any election-related details moving forward. So he is trying to look at those things. We are following what Chelsea did six months ago because they're the first ones that have done this. Luckily, we have not, you know, unfortunately, it's right now, but had this issue to deal with. So I do think we have qualified name, and I would make a motion that we either approve, will approve Jeffrey Donahue as the next vocational school committee member.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crowe. Counselor Seika.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief, really quickly. Counselor O'Malley, I was just stating that you had a, a personal relationship. That was it. I didn't, I did not mean, I did not mean to bunch you in with the open meeting law complaint, which is going to be filed tomorrow morning. Zaher, is there any way that you can come up and speak at the podium for me, please? Could I get a legal opinion on what's going on up here? Because Counselor Cologne Hayes can sit here and deny, deny, deny all she wants, but I've talked to several councilors up here that receive text messages, voicemails, and/or phone calls from her stating some not-so-nice things that Mr. Donahue could potentially, you know, get her for defamation on. And I just, I'm not quite sure whether we vote it, we don't vote it. I'm not sure where to go from here. But this, this isn't even about, again, Jeff Donahue. This is about this particular process. We're here in process, process, process all night, but this is about this particular process. We are not supposed to serial deliberate. We, we got in trouble two years ago for a counselor who was running for council president, which had nothing to do with any sort of a vote other than us electing a person to lead us into that upcoming year. And we got an open meeting law violation pulled against us because somebody called and asked for somebody's support. This, I feel like, is completely different. We had a member of this body calling to sway how somebody voted on a topic that is before us in deliberation.
So can I just, I'm going to just say, can we maybe ask for a definition of serial deliberation and then take the rest of the conversation...
Perfect.
...offline so that we can vote the motion on the floor?
Sure, and maybe I should just say, you know, I'm not going to, you know, my office doesn't just give legal determinations on the fly without doing some kind of investigation.
Understood.
Okay? So, you know, if, if a complaint...
If there was, if there was, I'm not saying there was, but if there was, is this something that we should be having a discussion on and voting on tonight? Or should we not?
I'm not even sure what that means. But if there's a complaint, if there's a complaint about an open meeting law violation...
So we should, we should take a vote, and then tomorrow, I'll file an open meeting law violation, and then we'll deal with that after?
The complaint goes in the first instance to the public body.
Yep.
The public body, in this case, the city council, will often refer it to the legal department to investigate and to respond on behalf of the public body, as I've done, I don't know how many times for you guys. So, including the, the couple of years ago that, you know, you might have been referring to. So, you know, I'm not going to say, sit here and say there's, there is serial deliberation or not. I mean, it's just...
Can you tell the public what serial deliberation is?
Serial deliberation can be found where somebody tries to communicate, one member of a public body communicates with another, a quorum of a public body, but not all at one time, but sort of circumvents the, the rule against deliberation with a quorum by going one by one to different, different members and communicating with them in that way. However, it doesn't necessarily mean that just because you happen to speak with, you know, individually with five or six people, it's automatically serial deliberation. It depends on what the substance of the communications are and what, to some extent, what the intent was as well.
Yep.
So it's not just you spoke with six people, therefore, it's automatically serial deliberation.
Understood.
But the process is what we've done before. The open meeting law says if there's a complaint, the complaint goes to the public body. It's brought to the floor at an open meeting, and it's either investigated by the public body or frequently referred to the legal department, and we will do our investigation and do our best to make a determination.
Awesome, thank you. I have one more thing before I no longer have the floor, if that's okay.
Okay.
I just want to, I, I feel like I said this not too long ago when we were up here for poor Chuck talking about his, you know, commission on the Board of Appeal, I think it was. And I'm going to state this, and I'm going to leave it at that. The city of Malden elects the mayor to lead them. Gary appointed Jeff Donahue for this position. This is not something that happens often. We don't have people that are passing away in seats where an appointment is necessary. You know, God rest James Soule back in September. We did nothing over the past two months, so maybe Gary thought he needed to send down an appointment because this position needed to be filled, and he did, he did just that. I, I don't think that, I don't think we're going against any particular process. This is just happens to be how this is going to be done at this particular moment. There's no process. We've never had to do this before. And as far as all of a sudden, all these other people that are interested in this position, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't remember, but I feel like there was a long-term woman on this city council, in this particular seat, before Mr. Holland took it over. And this never, I've never seen any interest in this school committee seat for the voc. I mean, I think it's great all of a sudden if there is, but if, if the mayor was thinking like I'm thinking on this, then there really has never been any sort of interest in the voc school committee seat, if, as far back as I can remember. I mean, it was Bob Macate's sister for years. I can't think of her name. Does anybody know it? Jean Feeny, right? And then, you know, and then Jim took over from her. This has not been a sought-out seat. So if it is all of a sudden, I think it's fabulous. But we need to make sure we have somebody in place immediately. Thank you.
Okay, I've got three lights, and then we need to call, we have two motions on the floor, and we need to call a question. Counselor McDonald for the first time. Oh, sorry. You have the floor.
Thank you. You know, briefly, I want to echo Counselor Winslow in just saying I really appreciate Mr. Donahue being here. I think the mayor has sought to lead this process in good faith. But I think that the appointment of someone to an elected position is, is the highest burden of appointment that we would make to a vacant elected position. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to set forth the process by which we're going to do that because it is not super well-defined. And so I would support a referral to committee, And so, I would support a referral to committee, and I hope that in that, you, we can have a discussion about how we might create the possibility to consider other candidates who may not have known this vacancy was open, or had the chance to apply. I don't have a specific recommendation about how to do that. I have ideas, but I do think that we should do that in coordination with the school committee, so that we all feel ready to vote on whatever comes out of that committee process. That would be my recommendation, uh, and I'd be happy to, um, support the Counselor Taylor's motion.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Uh, Counselor O'Malley?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll, um, I'll echo what Counselor McDonald stated. You know, I, I appreciate the mayor's proact, proactivity here, um, but I think for the, the, um, public confidence and, and fairness, I do think that we need to be able to ensure that everyone has a chance, in, including the, the individual put forward. Um, I think that the, the, the document, you know, doesn't say, like, you know, take a left, take a right, jump through a hoop, but it, it does pretty much say, the city council and the school committee jointly will decide who will replace this individual. And I think it's only fair to do that. Um, you know, there are people in our community who are also very qualified and have a cha, have, deserve to have a chance. Um, and I think whoever ends up having that in the end, whether it's the person who's been put forward, or someone else, um, I think they will be more successful, uh, knowing that they, they had a fair chance to get that. Um, I appreciate Counselor Crowe's position, you know, um, but I mean, fundamentally, it, it's clear. It's, it's the city council and the school committee. And of course, the mayor is the chair of the school committee, and I appreciate him taking the lead here. Um, and I think we can help. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Uh, Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Thank you very much. Just to address the, the concern that people may not want to have this position or apply for it, I mean, we are living in a way different Malden than many years ago. Uh, we have tons of people applying, um, for all our positions. I think, um, actually, Counselor Condon always mentions that in the Personnel Committee, that wow, look at the people we have now, you know, applying, um, they're just, it's just a different caliber. And our city, um, they rely on us to give them a chance and to be, um, let people apply to this position. And if it was posted, I guarantee you, we would have had a lot of people applying for that, just like we have for any other position. Um, and there is something that, uh, I read it already from the clerk. We do have a basis for a process, and that is the city council and the school committee, it says, put forth names. Um, this is not a mayoral appointment at all. That's, I don't know why that's even being said. It's good that if he wants to put down a name, that's fine. Put that name out there with everybody else. Um, but I just want to support Counselor Taylor's, um, her motion to send it to Personnel, because this may not be the only time that this is gonna happen. I mean, people could leave other positions. This could happen again. We should have a process. So, I do support that, and I'd like to, um, take a vote on that, um, motion now. Thank you.
Okay. Let's call a question. So, we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, right?
Yes.
Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Counselor--
The motion is to refer the appointment to the Personnel and Appointment Committee?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
That's what I have. Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
No.
Counselor Crowe?
No.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor Sika?
No.
Counselor Simonelli? That's a no.
Thumbs down.
He did a thumbs down. Counselor Spatafora? Also a thumbs down. Uh, Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President Linehan?
Yes.
That is a six to five in the affirmative.
Uh, I'm gonna call a five-minute recess. Counsel will come to order. Uh, the clerk has reminded me that I did not properly state that that paper was referred to Personnel when we concluded before we took a recess, so I do just wanna make sure that we do that. Um, next order of business.
Paper four, four thirty-three dash twenty-five. Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden, MCC nine point twenty point fifty, provisions applicable to all waste, is hereby amended by striking subsections A, B, and C, and in their entirety, yeah, subsections A, B, and C, in their entirety, and inserting the following in their place.
Okay. Counselor Winslow for the paper.
So, um, it's been pretty quiet out there. Um, I'm surprised, this is actually a paper to talk about our trash fees. So, um, so it's, something's going on here, and that is not the most controversial thing on the city council agenda, but just be transparent with everybody. That's what this paper is about. Um, and just to kind of give you an overview, um, I submitted this paper as one part of an alternative proposal I planned to put forth related to the proposed five-point-four million, prop of a two-and-a-half override now under consideration. And I'm, I'm, I'm putting forth, uh, the proposal that'll have three elements. Um, first will be what I would call a modest belt-tightening proposals, uh, maybe in, you know, one percent or so, to be included in the fiscal 2027 budget, um, that my preliminary estimate could reduce citywide spending by about one-point-two million dollars. That is pretty much preserving staff as is, but, um, and, and not touching, uh, other things that we can't really deal with. I mean, we're already reducing three million dollar in healthcare, hopefully, but really just looking at, um, budgets. I do have to say, in Maplewood Square, Billy, I raised the money for the, the flowers there with the, the community, so we're trying to do what we already tried to do--
Citywide thing, not just--
Yeah. So, but it is the type of thing. So, we, we actually formed the Maplewood Association of that. So, um, part two is really, um, looking at, um, there's a municipal empowerment act out there. Um, I did reach out to Chuck Rannigan to get an estimate. That, that is potentially, um, uh, could raise, uh, another six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars a year, somehow the legislature moves forward with that. Um, that would include, uh, a, a slight raise in the meals tax, as well as, um, the raise in the hotel tax and other things. So, so that's, um, that could, with, and I also think that, um, in the discussions we've had about spending, and, and, uh, I think we've had, hey, we have some overly conservative assumptions. I think we could rely on a small amount of reserves, so maybe about, between some municipal power revenue and some minor use of reserves, that's maybe another million dollars. So, that gets us down to the three-point, you know, four million. And then the, the fourth part is this, is, is this, um, focus on trash fees. One key part, I, I did look at a lot of the other communities, and I actually reached out to a former employee, Ron Cochran, who works in this program at Mass D E P, and tried to understand what's going on statewide. Um, there's a hundred and one cities and towns, or actually towns out there, where people have to take their trash down to the transfer station, and they have a little tag that they have to get. So, a hundred and one cities and towns like that. Um, I looked at cities and towns that were, um, you know, having trash and recycling fees. Um, you know, Melrose, theirs is up to four-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars a month. Um, but I was intrigued by, um, to hear that Salem, um, imposes a fee just on absentee landlords. And so, um, and I understand Chelsea has something similar. So, one of the things is to propose, for 2026, to have a surcharge of fifty dollars per unit for non-absentee landlords, to help shift the burden. And I think one of the things we saw in the trash strike was that a lot of, um, the places where enforcement wasn't, you know, or people weren't complying with the bag requirements or, or over-stuffing stuff, was, you know, where people are absentee, you know, were for absentee landlords. So, I think there's a legitimate connection there, that we have to do more enforcement and education, um, in places where the landlords or, or residents are not there. So, that's one thing. And then just, the proposal does, and you look at raising, um, our trash in recycling fees, either the bags or the tags, um, in 2027 by fifty percent. Those have not been increased at all since they were enacted back, what, in 2008, I think, forward. So, so that, basically, my estimate for that would be somewhere in fiscal, uh, tw- 2026, um, we would be, actually, I guess it would be, what, starting fiscal '27, um, that would be four-hundred thousand dollars in additional trash fees, with six-hundred thousand in the future. So, and if all these proposals come into place, my alternative proposal would be for a, a three-point-four million dollar override, instead of a five-point-four million dollar override. And that would, you know, help the immediate financial crush, crunch on the city faces. And these actions would also build fiscal stability in the future. Um, a modest override will ensure that we as a city, and as, as, uh, uh, school committee members Spatafor mentioned, that we need to continue to focus to work to change that Chapter Seventy funding. So, a modest override can make sure we're, um, we're focused as a body and our legislative--
Metropolitan Regional Vocational Technical School, for which the monies will be used for the fiscal years beginning July 1st, 2026, through June 30th, 2052. A yes vote would support a temporary increase in real estate and personal property taxes, beginning with fiscal year 2027, which is July 1st, 2026, through June 30th, 2027, until fiscal year 2052, July 1st, 2051, to June 30th, 2052. A no vote would make no change to the current tax structure.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor O'Malley for the paper.
Thank you. So, I want to start by saying that I agree with some of the public comment that we heard tonight. I do believe it is irresponsible and reckless to hold such a significant election of a ballot question related to Prop 2 and 1/2 in the middle of winter. I think that it is setting it up to fail. I think it's setting it up to divide our community. I think that people see through the see through the smoke and mirrors that it's being done in the middle of winter in order to suppress turnout and to really not get an accurate reflection of the needs and wants, it is, the needs and wants of our community. I will give you an example of another time that happened. You know, there's been a lot of talk online recently about the low turnout in our municipal election that we just had. But this particular paper has to do with $36 million that we are required to spend in order to build our new Voke. We are already required to spend that. It's coming out of our operating budget. And 2.2% of our community decided that actually, less than 2.2% of our community, 2.2% of our community was the total turnout. 666 people, that's a strange number, voted yes to make the city of Malden have to contribute $36 million to the Voke. That is what we are talking about tonight. That money is currently coming out of our operating budget. The whole point of all of the papers here is to try to correct mismanagement that is happening in our community. Right now, we are using our general operating funds to build capital projects. That is why we don't have any money. That has been happening for far too long. If you Google Massachusetts debt exclusions, DLS, Division of Local Services, you can find a very informative page about what are the legal requirements for Prop 2 and 1/2, what a debt exclusion is, and you can also get a really great chart that tells you which municipalities in what year and what projects they funded through debt exclusions. You can do schools, you can do general government, you can do roads, you can do sidewalks, you can do ACs, you can build a senior center, you can rehab the senior, all of these things that we have been doing have primarily been coming out of our operating, our checking, our bank, our savings account. That's not the right way to do things, particularly in a high interest environment that we've been facing and the fact that our costs are going up. So I agree, it's irresponsible. I think it's being set up to fail. It's probably not going to pass. And what I'm looking to do is come up with a Plan B. How can we try to save as much money from our operating funds so that we don't have to cut rank and file? But I will say that cutting rank and file is a decision. It's a decision of the mayor. The mayor comes up with the budget. The mayor has to put forward his proactive budget. But if the mayor decides that he wants to cut rank and file, police fire, and teachers, we can't add that back in. We can only cut further. And so, the benefit of being here for a while, a long, a long time, and some Counselor Condon and some others can probably state this, is that in the past, when mayors have tried to do something foolish like this, the council flexes its muscle by cutting all the mayor's staff and cutting management in order to bring the mayor back to the table to say, restore the rank and file employees, and let's really talk about rightsizing our city. By putting a temporary bandage of a Prop 2 and 1/2 that's going to divide our community, you're just kicking the can down the road. I agree, we need to get the state delegation to to change its tune and actually start, you know, walking the walk. But that's not going to happen before we need to do something. And as you know, the school committee represented from Ward 3, we have been meeting with the state delegation. It's been an all-hands-on-deck thing. So I appreciate the work that you've done, and I've been right there by you. Not at every meeting, because I, but I do appreciate that you have been working and I have been beside you. But I will say that when speaking with the public, people do not trust just generally giving more money to the city of Malden, not knowing where it's going to go. If you do a Prop 2 and 1/2 override, it's unrestricted. It's going to go to the special interests, maybe even my special interests. And I don't think that that's necessarily the right thing to do. I think that if people want to see something done in our community, they should know where their money's going to go. And that's the whole point of a debt exclusion. It's it's a temporary increase in taxes for a specific project. The Voke debt is a no-brainer. I think this should pass unanimously. It's something we already have to pay, and it's taking over a million dollars over our budget every year. I, that's a lot of bad news. I want to give you good news and lift people up a little bit. I did talk to our financial team, and our free cash certification did come in. It came in over what we were expecting. So our bank account has $21.8 million in it. That's a significant chunk of change. It's our rainy day fund. We are not we are not in the type of dire financial straits, in my opinion, that is being put out there. I think that's part of a narrative to get the community to think that they have to support a general debt, a general Prop 2 and 1/2 override. I want to talk about the amounts. I expect the finance committee, under the leadership of Counselor McDonald, to determine the exact amounts and the exact term of the loans, potentially, for these debt exclusions. In talking with our financial staff, the term of the loan is based on the useful life of the asset. So for instance, a house or a building can be as long as 30 years, but you can go shorter. So here you see 25 years for the Voke. That's also based on the fact that that is how long our commitment to contribute over a million dollars a year to the Voke lasts for. So again, the point of these papers is try to get us away from the mismanagement of using the general fund to fund capital improvements. That needs to change. Otherwise, the structural deficit is not going to be fixed, and a Prop 2 and 1/2 override is not going to fix the problem either. I will talk to each paper, but that was just the general one, and why I hope that it's a unanimous vote on the no-brainer, which is the Voke debt, that we're required to do. It's over a million dollars a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. I'm going to go next to Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Council President. And, you know, I have to just start by expressing my surprise as Finance Chair to read the docket on Thursday to see five override votes, papers on overrides, scheduled for the agenda, only one of which addresses the actual budget deficit that we have. The others relate to projects that don't exist, or potential new spending, or one that is paid for in another venue. So, to just speak to this one, and then I hope maybe we can take the, because this this first paper, 43225, does actually address something that is currently on our budget. Our, and when we say our budget, I mean the general fund, the general operating budget, which is what we pay the bulk of city staff with. So maybe we can take the others together. But on this one, I will say, this actually does address this problem. As the sponsor said, this is a $1.4 million dent if this were to go to the ballot and pass in an $8.4 million poll, of which we hope GIC moving, you know, changing our healthcare will save $3 million, but we don't know. And so, I think that's a perfectly legitimate thing to talk about. And I would be happy to have us talk about that in the finance committee once we make a decision about what we want to do about the override. Part of the reason I'm so surprised is that we've been having an extremely public process, talking to a lot of people on city staff, putting out information in public about what the real dynamics that influence our city budget gap are. And we have a public forum scheduled tomorrow for people to ask questions. And these papers are frankly a bit out of left field. And I don't think that it honors the work that not only we have done at the council table, but our city staff and the city employees who are watching this, you know, this process and wondering, my God, what is going to happen to my job? Or parents watching, I don't know what's going to happen to my schools. So I think it's really important that we sequence these conversations and not simply start to talk about a bunch of different things at the same time, because this stuff is complicated as it is, and we need to get our act together ultimately to say, this is the pitch we want to put in front of the voters. And I really do not believe it is fair, or appropriate, or will ever work to come up with six different things that we want to put in front of them at the same time. We've got to pick what we want to do, and we have to do that by figuring out what's really going to address the long-term structural budget deficit. I couldn't agree, I couldn't disagree more with you, Counselor O'Malley, that the problem with the budget gap is that we've been paying for capital things out of operating funds. We have decreased the amount of bonding that we do significantly. We paid for a lot of our capital projects, most recently with CPC money, which is not on the on the city budget, with federal community development block grants, not on the city budget, and with ARPA funds, one-time money, not in the city budget. What we don't, what we have not been doing is increasing our debt very much year over year. I mean, it's come down from $15 million a year on debt service to now six, between six and seven, I think. So that has actually come down and contributed to a better budget picture. We have talked many times about what contributes to the budget gap, rising healthcare costs, rising net school spending. These are things that we've demonstrated over and over again that nothing in these proposals addresses. And so I think it's really important that we finish what we started, which is a conversation about whether we want to put an override on the ballot. And I want to say really clearly, because this is important for anybody who comes to the forum tomorrow, the date of that vote is not yet fixed. We have a proposal from the mayor, and we can change that date. I think it's a good thing to talk about, because I agree that I've heard a lot of those concerns, and I think those are valid, about the timing of the vote. So that's the thing we can talk about and we can decide. Another thing is the amount or the structure of what goes on that override and what we say it covers or doesn't cover. And so, you know, we were starting to get into this earlier, but there are other structures other communities have used, different levels, different Those are all things that we actually do have the authority to do. And another thing we have the authority to do is to cut city staff and budgets, as we've noted. I certainly am going to make sure that by the time I vote on this, I've made my recommendations for where I think we should trim. But I think we've got to look at the whole picture. And so this is a time to get ideas out on the table. I appreciate you doing this in, for this particular one, and I'll speak to the others later. But I really just want to say, it makes me very sad to hear you introduce this paper on what is a really good project for our community by denigrating the financial acumen of our city staff by taking what I think are pretty nasty accusations and repeating them like they are truth, about mismanagement of city funds, and calling our overall numbers into question, really just doubting the whole process. I don't think that's in good faith. I think if you have suggestions for places you think you should cut, and I would say this to all of my council colleagues, I encourage you to put those forward and/or send them to the mayor's team. I actually think we should all do that, to show what we think is most likely to happen. But I, for one, have been working my butt off for a month and a half at this point, to try to give our community every opportunity to weigh in and ask questions, and really feel like they understand the dynamics of this. And I would just appreciate if our, if my colleagues here could show some respect for one another as we go about that process, because I think that respects the community that we're trying to serve. So, as I said, I'm happy to talk about this paper in finance when we have the time to do so, after we finish the conversation about the debt, or, excuse me, about the override that we started. And then we'll talk about the remaining four papers, which I, again, would encourage us to address as a group. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you very much. So, I want to just talk a little bit about how and why we put these on the agenda. And thank you to Counselor O'Malley, you went through a lot of the details there. So, we are having a community meeting. We wanted to put out additional thoughts. We can all have, like, reasons of why, or ideas of how we think we can close the gap here. That's okay. I was also surprised, I mean, when I got that letter from the mayor, the prop override, I was shocked too. I mean, I knew that we were in a financial bind, but I also know that, you know, the chair, as Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, I had no idea that was coming down. So, I also, I do appreciate that. I would have loved a little heads up on that too, because maybe I would have put these ideas out there way before. So, the debt overrides are things that are just ideas. So I just want to address also, so I appreciate all your feedback. I really, really do, and I think that maybe we went back and forth on Facebook, I'm thinking, but it's it's to get feedback. So the fact that this did go out on the agenda, and it did bring people out here, and we are hearing for you, I mean, that's the exact reason why it's on here. And some of this is the debt, so a debt override, the dates can be discussed. These, I was assuming, we're going to refer, we're not, I did not assume that we're going to vote here on the floor, right? We're going to refer these to finance. We can take them after, if we're feeling like we're a little backed up here. We can talk about them after the community meeting, but I think it's going to come up probably in the community meeting. I think it's the right time to bring these up. I don't think that we're not able to have other thoughts about ways we think that we can help fix this problem. So, that's why that was put on there. It was knocking doors. It was hearing from the people. These are all the projects I heard a lot about. Do I think all of them are going to pass? No. If they do, yeah, I would be surprised. But we put down what we heard, and I put down, my big one was the Roosevelt Park and the Voke, right? We have to pay that. We do also have to, in my opinion, de-lead Roosevelt Park. So, these were all ideas. I don't think anyone should be jumping the gun, thinking that we're going to vote to do this. Did I, you know, we think that? No. We're all hands-on deck right now. We should be talking about everything and leaving nothing off the table. So, if this gets, you know, I'm hoping it gets referred to finance, and we can discuss things about how we want to go, because I also believe, no way, I don't think February is a great time to be doing this. So, we do have a little bit more time, in my opinion, to discuss these, whether we put a couple of the, you know, a prop override on there with maybe a debt exclusion. Let's just talk about it and figure it out. That's all this is. So, that's all I have to say about that, and hopefully they'll get referred for a further discussion. And if people want to discuss it tomorrow at the community meeting, please bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Winslow, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I mean, I, in general, I mean, one of the things I kind of get a perspective on and try to normal parlance of, you know, kind of looking at your kind of own budgets, I mean, you have a checkbook, which is sort of you pay your immediate bills out of. And then, if you're in a good enough situation, you have savings, which is sort of the reserves, the free cash. And then, when you're making major purchases, like a car or a house, you have to look at getting a loan. And and so I think it's, gosh, if you can buy a house or get a car without having to go and get a loan, you don't have to pay interest. So why pay someone else interest? And so, so there's actually, the fact that we can do a lot of capital stuff, buy fire trucks and other type of things that are capital things without getting a loan or a debt exclusion saves the city money in the long run, just like if you were buying a car for cash versus getting a loan, especially now. I mean, I know, you know, just, I don't know, it was maybe 10 years ago the council voted, I think, $50 million to do paving work and that type of thing. Interest rates were so low, it was almost getting free money. Interest rates are high right now. So, we have to be extra careful about what we might put out in terms of debt exclusions. And so that's one of the things. Now, I, you know, there's five of them here. I put my name on only one of the five. I appreciate Counselor O'Malley reaching out. I had my own opinions, and all those that we go through that. But, you know, one of the things, this is an expenditure we, the voters committed, it's funny, 660, that's how many votes I got in Ward 6 this time. So, so imagine that's how, you know, just one ward voting for that much money that we spent. But I think, you know, generally, I think, you know, we know we want to support our schools and that type of thing. So, so that was why I thought this is one that's worthy of, like, at least discussing, because it can, you know, if we, you make that decision, are we going to make sure we put aside money every year for that, or are we just going to take that loan out and do that? That's some decision. Are we in that bad a crunch? I think that for the Voke, it's worthy of having that discussion as we put together the overall package. So I think that's worthy. I'll discuss the other ones. I think I did not put my name on those, because I had, I thought, we do have to set priorities. And and, you know, there's not only priorities about maybe spending money, but it's also, as a council, spending time to really, if we're going to really dig in and take this seriously, sometimes we have to quickly make decisions. I'm what I call a once-through decision-maker. Why waste our time in a committee if we can't just decide things today? So, so this one, I would be willing to send to committee. So, right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Winslow. I'm going to try to get Counselor Seminelli on speakerphone again. Counselor Seminelli, are you ready to speak? Can you give me a thumbs up? You good? Okay, all right, let's give it a shot. Oh geez, that's really loud. Can you, yeah, can you mute? Oh, yeah. Counselor Seminelli, can you turn off your speaker so that you can talk on the phone, please?
How you doing now? Good?
Yep, that's better. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So, listen, I got to tell you, what I'm hearing is quite ridiculous, I think, at this point. I mean, you're asking for a 2 and 1/2 override, and at the same time, you're adding to put more debt, from what I understand, on firehouse, art center, and Roosevelt Park again. Listen, folks, we're headed into some rough waters. I've been through this before. And we were lucky enough to close that deficit when I was on the council, I think I was actually council president at that time, by selling properties that we had. Lots of land that we had that we were able to get rid of at the time. I'm sure we don't have as much as we did back then, but we should be looking into some of those things that we have. We have the building on Pearl Street that nobody seems to be mentioning about, that we could probably sell off in this market right now for some decent amount of money. So those are some of the things that I'm going to be proposing in the near future. But I'm telling you, I don't, I cannot support any of this, except for the $36 million for the vocational school that we're already on the hook for. But as far as, like, you're asking the homeowners to take a 2 and 1/2 override, to vote for a 2 and 1/2 override, then you're adding more debt on top of it by paying for a new firehouse, art center, Roosevelt. Everybody talks up there about their own home spending, their checkbooks and their savings account. Well, you know, when you get bad times in your house, right, you got to pull your felt together. You got to, like, kind of hold back a little bit here. You got to stop maybe doing some cutting, some like Counselor Condon had mentioned about the ARPA funding money. So, you know, you've got this ARPA funding money that was supposed to be temporary, and yet, we're still holding on to employees that were hired by that ARPA money, and we're putting it on the general fund. And in reality, we're putting it to the Malden residents, the homeowners of Malden. And then we're going to ask them to take another, what's the firehouse cost? $10 million, $10 million for the art center, $10 million for Roosevelt. So you're at $30 million when you're behind the eight ball. I have never heard such ridiculous talk in my life. So I'm not voting for any of this, except for the $36 billion for the vocational school that we're on the hook for. And if nobody liked it, they'd come see me. That's all I got to do it.
He kind of brought it back around to the agenda item that we're talking about. Thank you, Counselor Seminelli. Okay, Counselor Taylor, thank you for being so patient.
That's okay, thank you. I, so I'm just a little bit confused, because the way that I'm understanding things is that we have a deficit in our general operating that we're going to have to make cuts. So basically, like, if my house budget, if I don't have enough to pay my overall bills, I'm not going to take out a credit card to go on vacation. And that's what the capital expenditures are. Like, that's a whole separate thing to say, I can't, I can't feed my family or pay my rent, but I'm going to do these other things, and I'm going to ask people to pay for that and take out more money. So, I understand that we want to have discussion, and I'm glad that that we are now bringing things up, when, you know, we have known about this for quite some time, like, but I'm glad that things are coming up for discussion. I just don't understand why this, when it doesn't seem to make basic financial sense. Like, you just wouldn't do that. You wouldn't say, I'll let my rent go for three months and go to Disney. Just my opinion, but.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counselor O'Malley for the second time.
Yeah, I think these are great. I appreciate that everyone's willing to have these conversations. Counselor McDonald, I'm going to have to push back. I'm not besmirching our staff. Our financial team has been telling us this for decades. The reason why I'm proposing a debt exclusion is because you, as well as the financial staff and the mayor's office, have for, like, a decade, not you a decade, but, you know, collectively a decade, have been saying that a Prop 2 and 1/2 override is a bad idea. There's a very slim chance it's going to pass. It's going to divide our community. The way to go is a debt exclusion, because people can see the fruits of the labor. They can see, this money goes there. It's not going to disappear into the god knows where. And so, that is not me, that's just me honoring and respecting the things I've been told by professionals for years. Y'all turned me into a convert to Counselor Taylors, from the Counselor from Ward 5. You know, when it comes to a debt exclusion, we are excluding the debt from the city's coffers. There's no additional cost to the city of Malden. There's a defined new revenue source, which is this debt exclusion. And we will be raising, for instance, with the Voke, $36 million over the, over the 25 years to pay for that money. That's coming out of increased property taxes, personal taxes, personal property taxes, et cetera. So it doesn't have a negative impact to the city's budget. It might have an impact to every property owner's budget, for sure. Like, that's what taxes are. But, you know, I put this out here, Counselor Cologne Hayes put this out here, to get the creative juices flowing. No one should be surprised. Every time this has been up here on the council, we've talked about this. Every time it's been talked in finance, we've mentioned this. I was surprised that y'all didn't put something forward. So, you know, before we get too far down this road, because I have to agree, there's been a lot of hem and han in finance, not a lot of actual walk-in-the-walk, just kind of talk-in-the-talk. This is me trying to walk the walk. I'm sticking my neck out politically. I think that having nice things is worth spending money. Maybe some people in the community think that there are different things that are nice. I happen to think that having a de-lead at Roosevelt Park would be great, so that the the students at the Salemwood School and the surrounding community can play in a lead-free environment and not have special education challenges, because they've been inhaling lead dust as a former Salemwood student. I think it would be great to make sure we have enough money to remove our lead pipes, so kids don't have more special education as they're drinking lead. I think it would be great to actually maintain our sewer system, so we don't have sewage going into the Malden River. And, not to mention, groundwater going into our sewer system, which then, we have to pay the MWRA to treat that groundwater. Maintaining our assets is the fiscally responsible thing to do. It's not cheap. We have no revenue source for storm drains. Counselor McDonald, you say you care about climate action. Is it climate action in 50 years or climate action today? Because it really needed to be climate action 50 years ago. So let's actually take the action. Don't vilify me, I won't vilify you. I hope we support at least one of these. It sounds like we do have support for at least the Voke. It sounds like we do have support for at least the VOKE. If that's all we get through, I think that's a success. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion to, for, for paper forty, thirty-four twenty-five to refer to Finance Committee for further consideration.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Winslow. Do I have a second? Okay. Are you, okay. Second by Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor McDonald, did you wanna speak to the motion?
No.
You're, you're all set, okay. Okay, point of information by Counselor Condon, you have the floor.
Is that referring to the trash fees? What's the paper?
This is for the VOKE.
This is for the VOKE.
The vocational.
The vocational.
Just the one paper. Okay, um, will the clerk please call the roll? Or Counselor Spatafora, are you all set? I saw you had your hand up before. I don't know if we can get him. No, we can't, we can't hear you, I'm sorry. Do you want me to try to call you? No. Okay, he's waving us off. I'm so sorry about the tech issues. Okay, we'll call the roll now.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor Seika?
No.
Counselor Semenelli?
No. It's a no.
Counselor Spatafora?
It's a no.
Counselor Taylor? Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President Linehan?
Yes.
That's eight to three.
Okay, so the motion to refer that to Finance carries. I would like to take up the next, is it four papers, together. I'm sorry, that is a lot of reading.
Read them, I'll read them all, that's fine. Paper four thirty-five dash twenty-five. Order that the city, that the city of Malden's special municipal election to be held on February tenth, 2026, include the following debt. Excuse me. When I read it, the other paper, it sounded okay. Okay. Excuse me. Order that during the city of Malden's special municipal election to be held on February tenth, the following debt exclusion ballot question be included. Shall the city of Malden be allowed to temporarily assess an additional $10 million in real estate and personal property taxes through a debt slash expenditure, expenditure exclusion for the specific purpose of paying for the construction associated with lead pipe removal, water, sewer, and storm drain system capital improvements, for which the monies will be used for the fiscal years beginning July first, 2026, through June thirtieth, 2037? A yes vote would support a temporary increase in the real estate and personal property taxes beginning with the fiscal year 2027, which is July first, 2026, through June thirtieth, 2027, until fiscal year 2036, which is July first, 2036, to June thirtieth, 2037? A no vote would make no change to the current tax structure. Paper four thirty-six dash twenty-five. Order that during the city of Malden's special municipal election to be held on February tenth, 2026, the following debt exclusion ballot question be included. Shall the city of Malden be allowed to temporarily assess an additional $10 million in real estate and personal property, property taxes through a debt slash expenditure exclusion for the specific purpose of paying for the construction associated with de-letting Roosevelt Park to a full three-foot depth and for the restoration of natural grass, a natural grass field and drainage system, for which the monies will be used for the fiscal years beginning July first, 2026, through June thirtieth, 2037? A yes vote would support, support temporary in, a yes, I'm sorry. A yes vote would support a temporary increase in real estate and property tax, taxes beginning with fiscal year 2027, July first, 2026, to June thirtieth, 2027, until fiscal year 2036, July first, 2036, to June thirtieth, 2037? A no vote would make no change to the current tax structure. Paper four thirty-seven dash twenty-five. Order that the city of Malden's special municipal election to be held on February tenth, 2026, the following debt exclusion ballot be included. Shall the city of Malden be allowed to temporarily assess an additional $10 million in real estate and personal property taxes through a debt slash expenditure exclusion for the specific purpose of paying for the construction associated with the outfit of an art center at the old Malden District Courthouse on Summer Street, for which the monies will be used for the fiscal years beginning July first, 2026, through June thirtieth, 2037? A yes vote would support a temporary increase in the real estate and personal property taxes beginning with fiscal year 2027, which is July first, 2026, through June thirtieth, 2027, until fiscal year 2036, July first, 2036, to June thirtieth, 2037? A no vote would make no change to the current tax structure. And paper four thirty-eight dash twenty-five. Order that during the city of Malden's special municipal election to be held on February twen, tenth, 2026, the following debt exclusion ballot question be included. Shall the city of Malden be allowed to temporarily assess an additional $25 million in real estate and personal property taxes through a debt slash expenditure exclusion for the specific purpose of paying for the construction associated with an East Side Fire Station, for which the monies will be used for the fiscal years beginning July first, 2026, through June thirtieth, 2052? A yes vote would temporarily increase the real estate and personal property taxes beginning with fiscal year 2027, which is July first, 2026, through June thirtieth, 2027, until fiscal year 2052, ju, which is July first, 2051, through June thirtieth, 2052? A no vote would make no change to the current tax structure.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor McDonald, you had had your light on, on the previous paper and indicated you wanted to speak to the other ones, and I accidentally shut you off. Do you still wanna speak to these?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna take you first, then.
I'm happy to let Counselor O'Malley, as the lead sponsor, speak first on these, if he would like to.
Okay, Counselor O'Malley.
You know, I definitely read the room, and, you know, I don't want to belabor this. So I think just a very simple up and down vote to dispose of these papers, it doesn't make sense to table them. It sounds like it doesn't make sense to refer them to Finance, to just sit on that docket. So I, I, I think that we should take up the votes separately, but I would move that we adopt all of the orders, so that we can dispose of them quickly. And I would need a second, so we can take up those, that motion to adopt.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second by Counselor Cologne Hayes. Discussion, Counselor Winslow?
Oh, can I?
Oh, oh, sorry, Counselor McDonald. Uh, I'm so sorry, Counselor McDonald, you have the floor.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. I support taking the vote right now on these papers. The thing I just wanted to clarify for folks who might be watching and reading, you know, watching at home or reading these different things, is that I think it's very possible for counselors to put papers forward that say, I have an idea and I'd like to discuss around this issue. We do that all the time. These are very specific proposals that, as far as I understand, are not attached to specific priced-out projects. Usually, if you're gonna do a debt exclusion, there's a specific price tag attached to a study, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's a building, you've got the architectural plans, you're at 100% design or close thereof, you know what you're gonna need to, where the bids are gonna need to come in at. So we have that for the vote. For the remaining ones, let me just clarify that for lead pipe removal, the count, this council already approved a couple months ago, a $17.5 million loan from Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, to cover the full cost of replacing all residential lead service lines remaining in the city, on the private and public side. And that's a great term loan, it can be, it's at a favorable interest rate, 25% can be forgiven, and we've already gotten the first installment of those funds. And those, that loan's gonna be paid for by the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, which is to say that we have already appropriated money outside of the general fund to pay for this purpose. So I don't know what this one would be used for, but I want folks to know that we are already paying for this and have committed to this because it's such a key issue in the city. For Roosevelt Park, I wanna clarify that we had applied for a Section 108 loan from the federal government to pay for the previous plan for a, a, um, construction project at Roosevelt Park. When that plan was ended due to community opposition, we retained the loan, and the loan is what is being used now for the de-letting process, which the last I had heard from city staff should be bid out, um, this, you know, this winter to be done in the spring, summer, I think? So that is, that, we already have that loan, we have already taken it out at a better interest rate, that already exists. There's not an additional project that need, that is, that is ready for funding, although there could be in the future. On the art center, I think we've just heard that we're already taking a look at different approaches to that site from the original plan, from Counselor Linehan, not to speak for her who's been leading this process, but again, we don't have a project attached to this figure. And on the purpose, on the question about the fire station, you know, there again, could be a good idea in the future, but we don't have anything more than a very preliminary estimate, which I think was actually a little higher than this. We don't have a property identified, and so I think that it is, uh, these would not, these, these are not right for consideration, even if we weren't in the middle of a conversation of an override. And I think it's really important that when we put these kinds of papers with this level of detail, it implies that things have happened that I don't think have. I know they haven't, and I just wanna make sure that we're clear on the record where the process is on each of these areas, because I agree, I hear about them from residents, I think they're important. But I think it's really important that when we put information out there as counselors, that we are as forthright, I'm not gonna use the word transparent, I feel like that just gets us in trouble, forthright about where our, what our sources are and what these things mean and what they're intended to mean, and not provide a level of false specificity. So, um, I'm, I, I will be voting against these papers, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Condon?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I think you should rip up every one of the papers. All right? In fact, give the courthouse back to the state. We do not need a broken-down courthouse.
Don't beat up on my courthouse tonight.
I think it's my courthouse. The fact is, $10 million doesn't even come close to straightening out that courthouse. It's falling apart, take a good look at it. Rip up the paper, it doesn't mean anything. Anybody can say, give me $10 million to do this or that. We tried giving money to Roosevelt. They didn't want it. Took us to court. I care about a, just a few things in life, all right? I care about our police department and the safety of the people. I care about our fire department. But we have something in Revere that's working. It isn't that it isn't working at all. What?
It's in Mauka Fire Station.
No, I know it's in Mauka, but it's on the Revere line.
It's right up the line.
Right? But everybody's taking $10 million, it's not even close. We have a program to de, de-lead, and it's working great, and we're staying up with it. If anything, you wanna take out a loan, then take it out from the MWRA, no interest loan, we do it every year. But we have to get some realization on what this stuff costs, because we're not even close. The papers mean nothing. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Condon. Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to let my, the counselor to let me know that you actually voted yes on one of the papers, so we'll rip up the other ones, the VOKE. Yeah, you voted yes on that. So, the, um, so now, we're, I just also wanna say that the, to the people who are listening out in the city, we did, and I did what I said I was gonna do. We had great conversation. I said I was gonna put stuff on the agenda so that we can talk about this, where everybody could hear and all the counselors could chime in. I'm really glad that the, the VOKE went through, because I think that was probably the simplest one, but based on feedback and, and what's going, I have no problem even voting down my own paper that I sponsored, I have no issue with that. A, a different one, based on, that's why we have these conversations. So I'm glad that that one went through, and I agree about, maybe the discussions could still happen now publicly, but the job here that we wanted to do is done, and I'm really happy about the VOKE, but also just to say to, we weren't, these papers aren't about taking out a loan, no more, no loans. These papers were about a debt override, so it would go to the taxes. So, um, just to clarify that. So anyway, we can go vote up, down right now, I have no problems with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. I'm gonna try to take Counselor Semenelli again on my phone. We've tried everybody's phone tonight, so give me one second. Counselor Semenelli? Don't forget to shut off. Okay. Do you wanna try again?
Yep.
Make sure you're thanking your friend who's been helping you all night.
Oh, I know, I know. They called for my tech guy, huh?
Okay, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Listen, that paper is the most fiscally irresponsible paper I've ever heard in my life. I mean, if you put that paper through, you'll have, you'll have, you'll have people moving out of this city in droves. You'll have nobody drinking the water, you don't have to worry about it. You won't have anybody playing in the park, because everybody will move out there. Are you guys crazy? They're looking for a two-and-a-half override, and now you're up for about $80 million. What's wrong with ya? I'd like to come back home soon, and I want you guys to show me your checkbooks and your savings accounts, and I'd like to really see how you guys handle that, because you guys should be pissed or broke by now, the way you're talking out there. I've never heard so much ridiculous talk in my whole career for 16 years as a council. Hold it down. See you later.
I think we need to call him in every time. It's, it's okay. You know, it's like a lot shorter, actually. He was, that was quick, that was great. Okay, Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, no, I, you know, I appreciate, you know, Counselor O'Malley did reach out to me just to, as a sounding board on these. I mean, you can see from where, where I went, I did not, you know, these last four, I was not supportive of them, and, and, and really very much for the reasons Counselor McDonald set forward, you know, on all of them, so that, I don't wanna repeat those. But I, I know like on that forty-four, thirty-five, twenty-five, related to lead pipes and storm drains, we act, and one of the things with, people wonder about the ARPA money, the mayor put $10 million into both lead pipe removal and storm drains. And we worked with kind of a list of about 20 problem areas. We fixed about, I think, like 19 of the 20 with $6 million worth of ARPA money, and I give big credit to city engineer, Yem Lip. It was, it was difficult, but we, we addressed a lot of the chronic problems, which is great. The only problem we didn't address was really, really something that Mass DOT has to fix up on Broadway. We couldn't come up with a scheme with, with the money we had. So, so, you know, we hadn't done anything on storm drains for 20 years, so we have a little bit of time to wait, but I, I, and also point out that Counselor McDonald, you know, he's gonna be talking about the climate action plan, one of the priorities that committee says we need to work on storm drainage and stuff like that. So, so we should, there are grants out there for, that we can start pursuing if we're smart about those, so we just have to come up with a plan. We've basically stabilized the system we have, and we need to figure out what to do as rainstorms get more intense and, and sea levels rise. So, um, so that's something we can work at with the Climate Action Committee and then come up with some grant proposals there. and then come up with some grant proposals there. You know, related to Roosevelt, you know, I think, you know, it's, it's good to, you know, know we are working to de-lead what we have to, to come into compliance. I think, you know, we do have more community process. I mean, just like I said, the Northern Strand Trail, which we heard glowingly about tonight, that was 20 years before we, we did anything in Malden before. So sometimes it takes, and that was through some, a couple economic cycles. So, so sometimes you just have to keep at it, just like the Arts Center as well. When you don't have the money to do the construction, you put the time and effort to build up the community support for that. So I think those projects, that's kind of where I feel they're at. It's really premature. And then on the fire station, you know, we had our firefighters here tonight. You know, we have to make sure we can keep the stations we have open first before we think about building another one. So that's kind of, I think that's, you know, an aspiration we'd like to have, but we don't really have a place to put it. And, you know, we're, what we're talking about in terms of the prop two-and-a-half override is making sure we have the resources to keep open what we have. So, so I really can't support in good faith these things. I think they're, they're ideas we have to continue to work and chew on as a city. I appreciate Council O'Malley bringing those. And let's, we'll look forward to trying to figure out all those in the future. But debt exclusion is not the way to solve these problems at this moment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Winslow. Councilor O'Malley, for the final time before we call the paper.
Oh, yes. Agreed. So I am surprised that my ideas made you all so mad. You know, it's just like, when I put it out there, I wasn't trying to make anyone mad. And, you know, if this is, if this is what I get in trouble for, given, putting out my ideas there, you know, I think that, you know, in the, in the spirit of the late Representative John Lewis, you know, get into good trouble, necessary trouble. I think if putting out, you know, ideas of how we fund our community, if this is what trouble is in Malden, I'm glad I'm in trouble. And, you know, I think that there's another little cliche that I'll, that I'll say and I'll leave you all with, is that a journey of 1,000 miles begins with the first step. I think that we took a step tonight, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have lost track of who made the motion. Did you make a motion to, to adopt the order? Okay. So I also heard you say that you were willing to withdraw the papers, though. Am I, you did not say that? Up and down vote? Okay. Right, that's what I was just going to say. So can you reiterate what the, what we're actually voting before we take the roll?
So we're voting to adopt the papers. A yes vote would adopt them and put them on a ballot, and a no vote would kill the papers. Okay.
Okay, so you'd like to take them one by one? And you wanted, and a yes vote would, would do exactly what it says on the docket? Would, no, a yes vote would not refer to finance. It would adopt the paper and put it on the ballot, and a no vote would not? Okay, understood. Right, okay. So we'll take them individually, and we do have to do a roll call? And we'll do a thumbs up and down? Is that good for everyone on teams? Okay, we're good.
Paper 435-25. Councilor Cologne Hayes?
I'm sorry.
We're voting to adopt.
Okay. I had to put this light on to read the paper just for a second. It's the lead water.
This is the lead and water pipes.
Yes, thank you.
Voting yes. Councilor Condon? Councilor Crowe?
No.
Councilor McDonald?
No.
Councilor O'Malley?
Yes.
Councilor Sika?
No.
Councilor Siminelli? That's a no. Councilor Spatafora? That's a no. Councilor Taylor?
No.
Councilor Winslow?
No.
Council President Linehan?
No.
That fails. Yep, that fails two to nine. And now we're moving on to Paper 436-25, which is for Roosevelt Park. This is to adopt the paper. Councilor Cologne Hayes?
No.
Councilor Condon? Councilor Crowe?
No.
Councilor McDonald?
No.
Councilor O'Malley?
Yes.
Councilor Sika?
No.
Councilor Siminelli? That's a no. Councilor Spatafora? No. Councilor Taylor?
No.
Councilor Winslow?
No.
Council President Linehan?
No.
That fails one to 10. And now we're moving on to Paper 437-25, which deals with the courthouse, Arts Center. And this is to adopt the paper. Councilor Cologne Hayes?
No.
Councilor Condon?
No.
Councilor Crowe?
No.
Councilor McDonald?
No.
Councilor O'Malley?
Yes.
Councilor Sika?
No.
Councilor Siminelli? No. Councilor Spatafora? Also a no. Councilor Taylor?
No.
Councilor Winslow?
No.
Council President Linehan, excuse me?
No.
That is defeated one to 10. The next one is 438-25, dealing with the East Side Fire Station, excuse me. And this is to adopt the paper. Councilor Cologne Hayes?
No.
Councilor Condon?
No.
Councilor Crowe?
No.
Councilor McDonald?
No.
Councilor O'Malley?
Yes.
Council, Councilor Sika?
No.
Councilor Siminelli? Councilor Spatafora? They both indicated no. Councilor Taylor?
No.
Councilor Winslow?
No.
Council President Linehan?
No.
That is defeated one to 10.
Okay. So that concludes that section of the agenda. Next order of business.
Paper 439-25, Communication. The Climate Action and Sustainability Commission respectfully submits their report on FY 2026 strategic priorities.
Okay. Councilor McDonald to receive the communication.
Would you like me to make the motion to receive it first and then read it? Or do you want to read it and then receive it?
I need a motion to receive it, and then I'll have the clerk read the communication.
So moved.
Okay. Clerk, will you please read the communication?
I got to call the roll.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I forgot we had to call the roll.
No worries. 439. Councilor Cologne, and this is to receive and file the communication. Councilor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Condon? We're receiving a communication. Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor O'Malley?
Yes.
Councilor Sika? Councilor Siminelli? Yes. Councilor Spatafora? Yes. Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Winslow? Council President Linehan?
Yes.
Okay. Will the clerk now read the communication?
Yes, I will now read the communication. To Mayor Gary Gristensen and the Malden City Council members from the Malden Climate Action and Sustainability Commission, which is comprised of Amanda Treat, Carrie McDonald, Diego Molonato, Lip Engi, Rachel Saret, Rebecca McFeeters, Ricky Ma, Robert Fitzpatrick, Ron Cochran, and Ryan O'Malley. And this is dated for October 23, 2025, regarding fiscal year 2026. Oh, I'm so sorry. It's 10:00 p.m. That's right, it's bedtime. CASC priorities. The Malden Climate Action and Sustainability Commission, CASC, is excited to present our strategic priorities for fiscal year 2026. Though we were officially formed in June of this year, we have quickly moved to implement key components of the city's 2024 Climate Action Plan, CAP. Our focus this fiscal year is on renewable energy, community engagement, flood mitigation, and data reporting. These are foundational areas critical to building a more sustainable and resilient Malden. We are thrilled to launch these initiatives and are confident they will deliver tangible, positive change for our community. Fiscal year 26 near-term goals. Our top priorities for this fiscal year are centered on the following goals. Renewable energy. We'll work to achieve Sole Smart Silver or Better designation by the end of fiscal year. This designation will help streamline the city's permitting process for solar panel installations, one of the foundational elements for achieving net-zero carbon emissions across the city. This is an exciting opportunity to make it easier for residents and businesses to go solar. Community engagement. We'll establish a clean energy coaches program. We aim to develop and train a cohort of volunteer energy coaches to provide residents with free, peer-to-peer guidance on transitioning to clean energy. To support this effort, we are looking to partner with local universities and business leaders. This program pairs well with the Sole Smart designation effort and is a fantastic way to empower our community, providing equitable access to affordable renewable energy options for all residents, including funding programs like tax rebates and Mass Save incentives. Flood mitigation. Our focus this year is to identify opportunities for flood mitigation. Malden has experienced multiple, excuse me, multiple natural disasters throughout the years with major, with the, geez, I'm so sorry. With majority of them involving flooding. The eastern parts of our city particularly prone to severe flooding. Our goal is to work with the city departments and local advocacy groups to identify potential solutions in high-risk areas. We are eager, eager to lay the groundwork for this effort. Data reporting and strategy. We'll update the city's greenhouse gas, GHG, emissions inventory. This effort is crucial for monitoring progress against the CAP's targets and identifying key emission hotspots. By the end of the fiscal year, we'll use this data to inform our near-term and long-term strategic planning for the next three to five years. We also plan to use this information to provide a transparent and data-driven summary of our progress to the city. We believe transparent data will be a foundation tool in our execution of the CAP, supporting all of our focus areas. Key collaborations. To implement these priorities, we'll collaborate closely with several key stakeholders. Metropolitan Area Planning Council, the MAPC. The MAPC is a crucial regional partner that will support us with technical expertise, data, and regional collaboration efforts for our ongoing initiatives. Malden Inspection Services Department. Their partnership is essential for the Sole Smart designation process, requiring streamlining permitting and inspection procedures. The Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, the OSBCD. The OSBCD will be a key partner for both Clean Energy Coaches Program and other community engagement efforts. Local community partners. These partners will be key in our public outreach efforts, such as Clean Energy Coaches Program, and provide on the, on-the-ground knowledge for flood mitigation. Sole Smart. Sole Smart provides free technical assistance in helping us achieve our designation, identifying opportunities for improvement in our permitting, zoning, and inspection process for solar installations. Mass Save. Collaborative of Massachusetts Electric and Natural Gas Utilities and Energy Efficiency Service Providers, working to deliver energy-saving programs and incentives to residents and businesses. Mass CEC. Quasi-public State Economic Development Agency, dedicated to accelerating the growth of clean energy sector across the Commonwealth.
That is, that is it. Okay. So the memo is placed on file?
Yes.
Okay, next order of business. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your light, Council O'Malley.
I just want to congratulate the CASC. Is that what we're calling it? The CASC? The Climate Act? There's an extra S. The Climate Action and Sustainability Commission for their, their first annual report. You know, they are doing the yeoman's work. And I also want to congratulate Council McDonald. I know this has been a long-term goal of, of the counselor, and I think everyone deserves applause all around. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Councilor Winslow?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say I was very pleased to see the discussion about flooding and storm drainage, especially for East Side. And I'd be happy to share with the committee about some of the work that I'm been trying to keep on top of with groups, the Saugus River Watershed, Cities of Everett, and Revere, and Lynn. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Winslow. And Council McDonald, I guess you just put your own light on.
I think it was maybe like on from way before.
Maybe it was. It's late.
Yes, I'll keep it very brief. I really encourage the Climate Action and Sustainability Commission to send this letter so that you all know what they're working on, and that's an invitation to collaboration. And to say, you know, on the stormwater pieces specifically, they've already met with, with the Conservation Commission and talked about bielaws there. They've talked with, with Yem Lip as the engineer. They've seen the, the presentation that the Mystic River Watershed Association did at the Waterfront Committee. So they're trying to, you know, figure out what's the next thing they can do and look for grant opportunities around that. They're really focused on grants with the assistance of Becca McFeeters, who is the Sustainability and Grants Manager, and we're very well positioned for that. MAPC has given us a technical assistant grant so that they're giving us additional staffing this year to help get everything in place. So that's really helpful. And I'm, I'm personally really excited about the Clean Energy Coaches Program, which I'm trying to focus on because it's, the goal is to help specifically renters and landlords get to, and folks for whom English is a second language, to get through this, these complicated processes and get access to these incentives. And that really speaks to our, our environmental justice goals as well. And I do want to just share that we've, I think we've already achieved a Sole Smart Bronze designation. So we're on our way to silver. We're getting close. And I think we'll do an announcement once that's ready. But they are doing really great work. I appreciate that. And encourage folks to engage if you would like to talk with them about that.
Thank you, Councilor McDonald. Okay, next order of business.
Paper 440-25, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Personnel and Appointments, to whom is referred Paper 383, series of 2025, having considered the same, make the following report.
Okay. On a motion by Councilor Crowe, seconded by Councilor Taylor. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor O'Malley?
Yes.
Councilor Sika?
Yes.
Councilor Siminelli? Thumbs up. Councilor Spatafora? Also a thumbs up. Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Councilor, Council President Linehan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Crowe for the paper, for the committee.
Thank you, Madam President. And so earlier this evening, the Personnel Appointments Committee, well, some of the other councilors, met with former police chief Kevin Mollis. And he, his name is put forward to fulfill the unexpired position on the liquor board by Paul Lee, who has moved out of the city. And as we all know, the former chief, but he's had dedicated 42 years of service to the Malden Police Department. And in his time of that service, he actually was the liaison to the liquor board on behalf of the police department and really did a lot of work with them on all different areas of enforcement and, you know, investigations and everything else. So he really has a unique, you know, view before he gets on the board of, you know, what the board does. So we unanimously voted to, yes, to... So we unanimously voted to, yes, to approve this appointment, and so make that motion.
Okay, on a motion, motion by Councilor Crowe, seconded by Councilor Cologne Hayes, to confirm, the clerk will call the roll.
You want me to read the paper first?
Uh, that would be great, thank you.
No problem. Uh, Paper 383-25, Mayoral Appointment, Kevin Mullis, 135 Russell Street, Malden, as a member of the License Board. Said term to commence upon confirmation by the City Council and to expire June 1st, 2028, and this is to confirm the appointment.
Thank you.
Councilor Cologne Hayes?
Oh, sorry, Councilor O'Malley, did you have a question? Sorry. Yep, go ahead, go ahead.
So I do want to say I'm in favor of, of, of this appointment, you know, I'm glad that it was, you know, discussed in personnel and had a chance to speak with the, with the appointee. I like how you said liaison, liaison. Okay, so the only question I did have is I do know that Councilor Spatafora was very adamant that all positions be publicly posted, and I did hear the counselor from Ward Eight ask if there was a process for this particular appointment, and I guess I just asked, like, did we do a public posting? It's something that has obviously been discussed a lot tonight and generally with Councilor Spatafora's order, ordinance, I can't remember. Was this publicly posted? The, the, the counselor from Ward One said that she didn't know if it was publicly posted in, in personnel, so I just wasn't sure. Thank you. And Mayor Lucy, if you're watching, I'm trying my best.
That, that was not posted. We've had, we've had other boards and commissions that people have applied for, that we have lists of, of different people. This is kind of a unique position. Also, Councilor Spatafora can speak to this. His ordinance is specific to jobs, not boards and commissions. Boards and commissions is a little different, because sometimes you have to identify residents that have specific skills and knowledge, so that's why Chief Mullis was brought in on this one. We also have to make sure that they represent different parties. In this particular one, we were replacing the Democrat position, and we're in the process of filling in the Republican position as well, because Mr. Lee Kinnon will be resigning as well.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize your light had gone off. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
For the License Board, we need partisan seats?
Yes.
We need light, for the License Board, we need partisan seats? I didn't, I never realized that.
Yeah, it's by statute.
Okay, interesting. Yeah, Councilor Cologne Hayes, did you have a question?
Actually, Maria, I didn't, I'm sorry, I was going to ask you a question too. So, I didn't realize that they were partisan either, so that was, that's great. But the, just a quick question also that we had asked, and I was very happy to vote for Chief Mullis, but is it a paid position? And if it's a paid position, does that make them an employee? I guess that was the question.
Um, I believe there is a stipend, but I'm not 100% sure. I believe the liquor board does receive a stipend.
And then the sec, something's ringing here, but, and then the second question would be, um, if it is?
They all become city employees.
Okay, once they're paid? Okay, thank you. In terms of like having to take the ethics test and everything. And the paper I think that you're referring to, because I actually met with the HR Director about this, it came up in relation to an open position recently, and we sat down and actually watched the meeting, if you can believe it, because it was during COVID, to make sure we had it right, that it was just positions and not boards and commissions, and it was to publicly advertise and not just appoint people for internal postings for jobs in City Hall. I think we could, if we wanted to take this up, we could for boards and commissions, but it was, it's something with the new HR Director, we wanted to make sure there was clarity on, so I had just, just in the last like two months, sat down and read those minutes, watched that meeting to make sure that Councilor Spatafora's paper was clear. Okay, I do see Councilor Crowe has her light back on, because I turned you off accidentally.
That's okay. I think you turned me on accidentally. So I just wanted to say in committee that I did actually set the record straight sort of about, that it was really about positions, and boards and commissions were different. Again, I'm going to reiterate, when it's a mayoral appointment, we cannot dictate the process that he goes with. So the, it's the process of one. So the, but that was asked and answered, and it was, talked to, spoke to the, the ordinance that it was employees, again, not necessarily the boards and commissions, and about the stipend positions. I believe, and I might be wrong, but I have to find out, I believe that stipended boards and, and commissions are only those that are statutory required. I believe that's what is the triggering factor of having a stipend or not.
And I just want to add to that, Counselor, that it's very rare that we don't post for boards and commissions, and Kathleen Manning-Hall could attest to that, because she does all the interviewing and screenings and, you know, makes the recommendations to the mayor, along with whoever's on the panel with her. But mo, almost 99% of all the boards and commissions are posted positions.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, so we need to take the roll?
Yes.
Okay.
Voting to confirm.
So we need to vote to confirm Kevin Mullis for the appointment to the License Board, and we are working to get Councilor Simonelli back. He wants, does he want to speak?
No, he doesn't want to speak, he's going to vote.
Oh, just to vote, got it, got it, okay.
Okay. Councilor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor O'Malley?
Yes.
Councilor Seika?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
Councilor Spatafora? Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President Linehan?
Yes.
The appointment is, the appointment is confirmed.
I'll turn the podium off so we don't echo. Okay, next order of business.
Paper 441-25, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Rules and Ordinance to Whom Is Referred, Papers 276 and 277, Series of 2025, Having Considered the Same, Make the Following Report. Committee recommends that the papers be recommended favorably as amended to the full City Council, pending review by Engineering Inspection Services, Legal, and OSPCD.
Okay. Is this your paper? This is, okay. Yep, okay, so on a motion by Councilor McDonald, seconded by Councilor Winslow to accept the committee report, we, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon? Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor O'Malley? It's not, I think we have to wait for him to get that.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm passing out something from Counselor McDonald. That's from Legal, if you don't mind. We're waiting for Councilor O'Malley, but we will have to. There's this one, and lead pipes. Who says that? Is that Steve's or is that you?
These are attached, they're, we should do them together.
Oh.
They're part of the same.
Oh, right, you added that, sorry. You kind of added.
Yeah, you see, on the left, they're, because you review lead pipe inspections.
Right. Where did he go? Just rest him?
You ride sale, let's go.
I know. He said, text me when you're almost done. I knew the minute I texted him, something would slow down.
You should never do that.
Right?
Just when John's like, how much longer are you going to be? And I say it, I'm like, yeah, no, not another, I'll be another hour.
Right.
Personal privilege could take 30 minutes.
I don't have anything to say.
Me neither.
Well, I guess I do, because if Craig can't talk, I have to talk about the tree lighting.
Oh, boy.
There you go. Counselor O'Malley?
Oh, that's true, that's true.
We're voting to receive the committee report from Rules and Ordinance. Counselor Seika?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Say it again.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora? Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Counselor Taylor? Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President Linehan?
Yes.
That's all yes.
Okay, do we want to read the paper?
Yes.
Actually, yeah, Counselor McDonald makes a good point. I think we do need to take this paper and Paper 277-25 together.
Okay, I'll read both.
Thank you for that.
277-25. Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden MCC 9.16, Rental Units Inspection Required, is hereby amended as is outlined in the body of the paper, body of attached paper. And Paper 277-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden MCC 9.24.10 is, uh, excuse me, Regulation of Lead Pipes in Residential Housing is hereby amended by.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McDonald, for the papers.
Thank you all. I, I'll try to keep this brief, because we've had a lot of process around these two things, but to remind folks who may not recall when we first introduced this back in like June, Malden already requires every rental unit to be inspected at the point the tenant turns over. We also require that rental units not have lead pipes serving them, but we didn't have a consistent mechanism to enforce this. So this proposal takes a, a, an approach that many other cities and towns like Boston and I think Lemonster and Pittsburgh do this, and a range of cities across the, the Commonwealth, which is to just create an annual registry of landlords and the units that they have. And then they will let us know the term of tenancy, and when that is up, then we will require the inspection to happen. It changes from a price per inspection to a lower annual price per year for each unit, and it requires that if you do not have a, if you don't live nearby, you need to designate someone as a residential agent, as a resident agent who does live within 25 miles, to be able to deal with landlords who are, in fact, absentee. This is a way to require, to have someone who will take our phone calls, frankly, from the problem properties unit or anywhere else. And we made this applicable to all rental units unless they are Malden Housing Authority units, because they have a separate process. And so we then also tie this to the lead pipe removal ordinance, that's the second paper you have, 277, had some back and forth about this in committee, and landed where a property owner has to get a certificate one time, certificate from engineering, that just says, we don't have, you don't have lead service lines through this property. And I was just talking to our inspector of Inspeccional Services earlier today, because they've been consolidating the health inspectors that do these inspections anyways with Inspeccional, they can kind of roll some things together, and it can all be a part of their inspeccional permit system online, so it'll be very, much easier to track this, is a good time to do it. Just to note, we just, if you are, if there is a property that has a residential, that has a rental unit and is otherwise ready to pass inspection, but does have a lead line, the director of Inspeccional Services has the ability to approve that permit if, or excuse me, that rental unit for use, if there's a plan to replace that lead line within the year. And we have resources now for all of those units, so it should be possible, so then they'll be able to remind the, you know, the, hand them off to engineering or to OSPCD for resources and be able to check in on them within the year to see how they're doing on that. So I think we had a lot of back and forth about this in committee. I, the, what I handed out was just some clarifications that are not intended to change meaning but are based on Alicia McNeil's review and are just for clarification. It, it took, it replaces the current language that's in ordinance, all owners, lessers, or persons in charge are in control of a rental unit, with the phrase owners and agents, and then defines agents, so it just cleans that up to make it a little more obvious, moved a sentence or two around, and clarified that while individual units that are owner-occupied are not covered under this, any unit that might be in a building that is not owner-occupied is considered. So to put it another way, if you own a triple-decker, you live in one unit, your unit is not covered, the other two are, if they're rentals, to be clear. And then had to clean up another, another section to, to clarify that that's not in conflict. So those are the only final edits, they were just typographical from Legal, and I think we're ready to enroll. I don't have any desire for us to ordain on the same night, but would love to get this going so that OSP, excuse me, Inspeccional Services can get the ball rolling with scheduling the input of these permits into the system.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McDonald. Do you, you have a question, Counselor Crowe?
I, I understand, you know, enrolling, so, but should we, as amended?
We have to amend first and then enroll, yep. Yep, thank you for that clarification, that's right.
Okay. Ca, uh, Counselor... Oh, it's you, you're putting on your light for Counselor Simonelli, understood. Okay, so I'm putting on, I was, I was, that was, I was very confused there.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm going to put on the end light so that our clerk can put on Counselor Simonelli by phone.
All right, you can vote.
I, that, that...
No, he's not speaking, just for the vote.
I see, okay, so I'll go to Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I mean, we had some very good discussions, I mean, as you can see, most of us, I think, did everyone sponsor this, co-sponsor this paper, so I think as a council, we were very supportive of this. Appreciate Counselor McDonald's efforts to advance this, as well as, you know, making sure we got the thorough legal review to make sure this is a tight ordinance. I mean, I know a few things we did do in committee was, you know, one of the things was to make, you know, if, if a unit turns over every six months or something like that, then there's some flexibility into whether you have to get an inspect, inspection, that type of thing, so, so we tried to work in things that were, were practical, and I think that was also related to the, the lead line ordinance as well. So I think that it was a good process in terms of, you know, ironing out things that, that integrated to what we were doing and take into account that, you know, now that the Inspeccional Services is leading this effort and has systems, I think it's just a really good result, so thank you for, Counselor McDonald, for spearheading this, and I say the council, the, the, you know, the committee did vote favorably to recommend this as a council, was subject to legal review, so thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion related to the amendments? Okay, so a motion by Counselor Crowe to amend, seconded by Counselor Taylor, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor Seika?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Oh, that's, it helps if I put on the mic.
Okay, we hear.
Okay.
That's a yes. Counselor Spatafora? Yes. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President Linehan?
Yes. Okay, and did somebody, Counselor McDonald, did you make a motion to enroll?
I would like to make that motion, yes.
Okay, do I have a second? Oh, I'm going to have Counselor Taylor do the second, and the clerk will call the roll on the motion to enroll.
Yes. Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon? Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley? Counselor Seika?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Spatafora? Counselor Spatafora?
Thumbs up.
That's a thumbs up. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President Linehan?
Yes.
Those papers are, that, that paper is enrolled.
Okay.
And we're amending.
Do, okay, so for the lead pipe paper?
For 277-25.
Right, 277-25.
There's no amendment.
There's no amendments on that? Okay, so do we have a motion to enroll? So moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Winslow, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon? Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley? Counselor Seika?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora? Yes. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President Linehan?
Yes.
All yes? So that paper is enrolled.
So that is enrolled. Next order of business.
Paper 442-25, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on License to
The Standing Committee on License To Whom Is Referring Papers 387 through 397, Series of 2025, Having Considered the Same, Make the Following Report.
Okay, on a motion by councillor Sika, seconded by, who was in the license? Councillor Crowe? Councillor, okay, councillor Cologne Hayes, clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councillor Condon? Councillor Crowe?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley? Councillor Sika?
Yes.
Councillor Seminelli? Councillor Spatafora? Yes. Councillor Taylor? Councillor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President Linehan?
Yes.
That's all yes?
Okay, councillor Sika for the committee report. I'm so sorry, yep.
Thank you. The license committee met on all these licenses that Morgan is about to read in two seconds between tonight and a couple of weeks ago. They were all voted out unanimously from the committee, so I make a motion to grant all these petitions.
Okay, so let's have our clerk read the petitions before we take the vote. Okay.
Paper 387-25, Petition, Amusement Machines, GLS Associates, Inc., 50 Holden Street, Malden, Five Machines, Renewal. Paper 388-25, Petition, Class Two, Joe Champa Auto Body, Inc., 322 Eastern Avenue, Malden, Four Vehicles, Renewal. Paper 389-25, Petition, Class Two, Jordan Motors, Inc., DBA, Malden Auto Sales, 147, excuse me, 147 Ferry Street, Malden, Twenty-Four Vehicles, Renewal. Paper 390-25, Petition, Extended Hours, Vodoborik, Boston, LLC, 90 Pleasant Street, Malden, Hours, Occasional Saturday and Sunday Events, 12:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., Renewal. Paper 391-25, Petition, Extended Hours, Ellen K. Billiards, Inc., 77 Exchange Street, Malden, Hours, Seven Days, 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., Renewal. Paper 392-25, Petition, Extended Hours, MRM Donuts Corp., DBA, Dunkin' Donuts, 17 Broadway, Malden, Hours, Seven Days, 4:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Renewal. 393-25, Petition, Extended Hours, Walgreens Store Number 03130, 185 Center Street, Malden, Hours, Seven Days, Twenty-Four Hours, Renewal. Paper 394-25, Petition, Livery Company, HPL Group, LLC, 500 Broadway, Apartment 4139, Malden, One Vehicle, New. Paper 395-25, Petition, Livery Driver, Homie Pierre-Louis, 500 Broadway, Apartment 4139, Malden, New. Paper 396-25, Petition, Livery Company, YHS Transportation, LLC, 137 Highland Avenue, Malden, One Vehicle, New. Paper 397-25, Petition, Livery Driver, Yves Henry Said, 137 Highland Avenue, Malden, New.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion to grant?
Motion to grant, please.
Okay. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Crowe. Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor, sorry. Councillor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councillor Condon?
Yes.
Councillor Crowe?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley? Councillor Sika?
Yes.
Councillor Seminelli?
Yeah, I think we lost him.
Okay, he is, all right. Councillor Spatafora? So yes? Councillor Taylor? Councillor Winslow?
Yes.
Councillor, council president Linehan?
Yes.
Okay, that's 10-0, granted.
Okay, next order of business?
The docket is clear.
Okay, does anybody have personal privilege? Okay, councillor O'Malley?
I think we should take 15 Ferry, no, I'm joking.
Oh, my God.
Tonight's a good night for that. So I just wanted to, you know, let the community know that Malden Arts will be hosting a Public Art of Malden Trolley Tour this Sunday, November 23rd, at 1:00 p.m. You can go to give, G-I-V-E butter, B-U-T-T-E-R dot com slash trolley, T-R-O-L-L-E-Y, tour, T-O-U-R. So givebutter.com/trolleytour to get your tickets. We'll be showing switch boxes to murals and sculptures, and we'll tell you the stories behind them, and maybe you'll find out some art that you maybe, didn't even know existed. And that will be leaving from 158 Canal Street at the Canal Street Art Hub. Hope to see you there, thanks.
Thank you councillor O'Malley. Councillor Winslow?
Yeah, I just want to thank my neighbor Melissa LePlante, who's doing, working and volunteering with Friends of Malden Public Library for passing these things along. So coming up on December 7th, two to four, Winter Holiday Concert at the Malden Public Library, that's always a great time in the, there, and they're going to have the Must Excite Opera do some singing, as well as all this in the Historic Converse Art Gallery at the library. So it's a really nice time, and it's, you know, what a wonderful place to hear wonderful music. It's a really special thing about Malden to go there. So, and then Saturday, the 13th of December, attended, two at the library, holiday book sale at Malden Public Library. The books, $2 for hardcovers, $1 for softcovers, children's books, three to one. I bought some used books, it was $2.50 over in Somerville, so this is a good sale. Come out and get some books to read over the holidays, and they're also looking for volunteers to help out as well. So come out for those events, and everybody, wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving, so thank you.
Great, thank you councillor Winslow. Councillor McDonald?
Hello, yes, I do want to remind us all that tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. online through, livestream through UMA, as well as in person at our senior center, we are having our public forum on the proposed override paper. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit about how that's going to go, to save me from emailing you all. We will start at 6 o'clock, we're going to have a presentation from the mayor that will give a very, you know, brief highlights of what this is, what it means, what the proposal is, what we're asking for, and the reasons for that. Then we are going to have the opportunity for a question and answer from people who attend, and there will be staff from the city there for folks who, if their question is answerable, or if it's something about the override vote itself, or any of those questions, we'll answer the questions we can, the ones that we can't, we will write down and come back to. There will be a way to ask questions virtually, live, it'll be like through a third-party platform, we'll explain that during the live streaming of the meeting. And if you want to submit your questions or suggestions or whatever in advance, you're welcome to do that by emailing citycouncil@cityofmalden.org, and Lisa is compiling those. So if you can't come, but you want to submit a comment, you can do it there. I just want to say clearly, this is not a public hearing, where there's like a pro and then a con, nor is it a back-and-forth session between questioners and members of the city council. The goal is to let people really have some public dialogue about it, get their questions answered, pose questions that they think should be answered, so we have a real full hearing, not, well, I'm going to avoid the word hearing, but a full public discussion about these things, because our discussion has been largely in the Finance Committee. I really hope folks will come and attend, or send their comments, or watch later. I hope some of you will want to come, and encourage people to participate, and we will be meeting the following week in Finance to review where we're at in the process, but wanted to encourage everyone to attend, and encourage others to attend and participate if you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor McDonald. Councillor Sika?
I don't have my light on.
You keep going into this other box that's different from everyone else, I don't know what you did with your mic this evening.
Thank you, though, I don't have any personal privilege.
Okay. Okay, motion by councillor O'Malley, do I have a second? Everybody? All right, I guess we have to call the roll on that.
Councillor Cologne Hayes? Councillor Condon? Councillor Crowe?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley? Councillor Sika? Councillor Seminelli is gone. Councillor Spatafora? Has a thumbs up. Councillor Taylor? Councillor Winslow? Council President Linehan?
Yes. Good evening, everyone.